Look nice. Well, we think I had a chance pouring some water.
Yeah, we'll try again. You're having a fire.
Good morning, how are you this morning? You look lovely this morning.
Morning, Henry. Well, I can't say how long the meeting goes.
Thank you. What?
Okay, I have to be at work.
They were trying to get the SDI new attorney in for a regular session like about 9:30, 9:45 before we do our regular agenda.
The one I answered, yeah. Garcia's will be there and a guy from Wasco who's done this program. Somebody who's already implemented a program to answer these questions. Because I don't know the answer.
Yeah, I sent Tim an email this morning about a meeting this afternoon we have. I didn't know how negotiations were going.
Well, thank you.
Henry, how are you? You too.
Morning, Henry. How are you?
Not good. Long story. It's up to the lady, but the golf course is too.
Ed has, you know.
I would never believe you're in.
Ed has just been counting me saying, "You gotta come out, look at this."
Well, it's so impressive. Not only the golf course itself, I'm not a golfer, but the construction of buildings, crasser style buildings, and the golf pro, what he got most likes, I keep my mark. And probably a club, where it's like a six-figure joint club, so it wasn't as nice. Yes, well, we have a planning meeting, they're in another week or so.
Thank you. I think, I said, hey, could I get out safely? Fifteen minutes probably by the golf course. I guess they have some folks out there playing already.
They're only getting us 12, 11 miles. And after we just stay for the 11 miles. But if you said you were, you know.
I don't know what that's about, too.
What's your big challenge as well? You know, the way that gas prices along, I said, you don't understand, you're in a good place. People were thinking about their life, their existence, this. It's a show here on Fresno.
And once they're good there, they're very impressed when they see. And you're kept in by a bucket too.
No, they're not. Prices are, that's the one thing that prices, the guys who realize, he says, you can go play Sherwood and five dollars plus, but Sherwood would build 30 years. He says, you go out in the ways of the ancient, I'm out there playing, they played one time, and it's worse than green, I mean, worse than the railway, worse around. You know, I mean, you know, so, the people, you know, those who are fishing out of this as well, they're going to say, well, I pay top dollar, but I'm getting top dollar.
Are they, are they, are they charging like a dollar per person? You know, they're charging more.
I don't know what they're charging, I should have brought the, this thing, but the, but we are, they want.
Whatever.
In 1960.
Don't worry about it when I get there.
They have a discount thing to people.
Good morning. Welcome to the June 10th, 2008 meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Please rise and join the board and I, as we salute the flag and then remain standing for a moan of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the broad, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some interesting agenda items today. Lots to talk about and lots to do. I would like to start with an introduction. Please indulge me bored. A lot has changed since last Tuesday, last Tuesday's meeting. And I just want to introduce Supervisor-elect, if you will, Pete Vanderpool. He's been coming to the board meetings last Tuesday. He will be my successor, not until January. So now you all know who he is, and if you need something, you know where to go.
Madam Chair, we already assigned him a bodyguard as well.
Did he bring a bodyguard? Oh, he did. Lieutenant Boudreaux. Well, that's good. That's the way to work it, Pete. Anyway, welcome and congratulations. We will start then with item number one this morning. We're going to have a presentation on high-speed rail. And with us this morning is Eric Von Berg to do the presentation. Mr. Von Berg is the Public Outreach Manager for the Fresno to Palmdale segment of the California High Speed Train. He's part of the Joint Powers Authority of URS, Hatch, Mott, McDonald, and Airep Corporations. This team was selected by the California High Speed Rail Authority to conduct the design, environmental documentation, and public outreach for the Fresno to Palmdale segment of the high-speed train. Mr. Von Berg has more than 17 years of experience in public outreach and environmental transportation and regional planning, having worked for Fresno County and Caltrans prior to joining URS in 2004. Okay, this is new. He's a boomeranger, having grown up in the San Joaquin Valley, left for college, including a master's in regional planning, and returned to raise a family and practice e-planning in the valley. Welcome, Mr. Von Berg.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Again, Eric Von Berg with, representing the High Speed Rail Authority this morning. What I'd like to do is show you a four-minute video that the, that the High Speed Rail Authority put together and then do a brief PowerPoint presentation.
By the year 2030, California's population will increase by 30 percent, surpassing 50 million. Adapting will require highly efficient, safe, and clean transportation alternatives that support our growing economy and protect our landscape and environment. This is California High Speed Rail.
The governor and the legislature have seen the light on global warming. They've seen the light on energy efficiency. And the high-speed rail, it would be a fundamental part of a package of infrastructure and policies to lessen California's impact on global warming, to lessen our impact on imported oil, and to improve our quality of life.
Over the past four decades, high-speed trains have proven to be the safest and most reliable form of transportation in the world, and are ideally suited for the unprecedented needs of California in the 21st century. Moving at speeds in excess of 200 miles per hour, high-speed trains will link California from San Diego to Sacramento and the San Francisco Bay Area. A trip from San Diego to Los Angeles in under an hour and 20 minutes. Downtown Los Angeles to Palmdale and Ontario airports in 25 minutes. Downtown Los Angeles to downtown San Francisco, just over two and a half hours every time, regardless of weather.
I believe that expanding those opportunities in a 20-minute high-speed train ride from Anaheim, in the center of what we call the Platinum Triangle, in the middle of the densest area of all of Orange County with residential densities, to be able to get from there to downtown Los Angeles in 20 minutes is a great way, not only to relieve traffic congestion on freeways, but to address future potential and future needs.
High-speed trains are a clean technology. Running on electric power, high-speed trains will help California meet critical air quality and CO2 standards while also protecting our landscape by using existing right-of-ways and promoting sustainable development.
We think the project is designed well. There are no stops in the middle of nowhere. The stops are in existing urban areas where they should be. Plus, they've accounted for wildlife corridors, and most importantly, the effect on global warming. High-speed rail is an important part of the solution that we need to have, and have soon, on global warming.
Requiring no operating subsidy, high-speed trains will strengthen California's economy, creating as many as 450,000 new permanent jobs. Benefits will be immediate. Moving safely on improved separated grades slated for construction over the next decade, California's rail and road network will be vastly improved.
I believe we need to focus on the future. We need to focus on our next generation. What is our planet going to look like? How is our next generation going to get to work? We need to think about the benefits in the long term and not just today.
To secure California's transportation future, the California High Speed Rail Authority is acting now to preserve right-of-ways and complete engineering and environmental studies critical for building the system.
The options are either expand the highways, expand the runways, and expand the airport gates, all at a cost of over $82 billion. We can bail the high-speed train for half that cost.
High-speed trains are a clean, safe, and cost-effective alternative for the transportation needs of the California of the 21st century. It is time once again for California to innovate. It is time once again for California to lead the way. This is High Speed Rail.
That gave you a nice broad overview of the project. And what we're here today is, what we've been doing is going out trying to get the word out, let people understand the project and where we're at and the progress we've been making. And, you know, these are the activities that have gone on here, is that we have, there is six consultant teams working on the project. Say, our consultant team's working Fresno to Palmdale. We also have a sister team working Palmdale to Los Angeles. All have been actively working on these projects. We have an 800-mile route selected for the project. There's the $9.95 billion bond that's on the November ballot. Currently, the polling shows it at a 58% approval rating for that. And as well, talking about our three-tier financing plan that's in place here with the project. And trying to find out from people in the communities of what they see is in it for their community or not, and so we can answer those questions and make adjustments if necessary. Because the problem today in California is by the year 2030, we're going to have 50 million people here. And we already have, you know, three of the five most congested areas in the country right now. And, you know, it's going to be very difficult to expand all our freeways and runways just to achieve, to, you know, even maintain the capacity that it is today. You know, there was Prop 1B had a billion dollars set aside just for 99. That billion dollars is getting us 70 lane miles on 99. That's 35 in each direction. You know, that's really not going to further, you know, it helps, but it's not, you know, solve our problems in transportation in the valley here. And as well with the air, that, you know, 90 new gates, five new runways that are needed. And I don't know if, you know, it's even possible to, with congestion, to expand at LAX or at San Francisco. And as well pollution, you know, we know air quality is a big issue in the Central Valley. 41% of our state's emissions come from the transportation sector. This is a way to get vehicle miles reduced. That red line that you see going up almost exponentially, that's the vehicle miles traveled as our population increases, you know, it's just, it's sort of staggering how many more miles are driven each day, you know, as your population increases. And we feel that high-speed train's a way to really reduce the vehicle miles traveled. Again, the cost for doing those expansions of the freeways and runways would be $82 billion. So our price tag at $40 billion is half that cost with the high-speed train. That's why we see it as the solution. It's an 800-mile segment with top speed of 220 miles an hour. That would occur in the Central Valley, you know, rain, fog, or shine. You know, the purpose of the project to connect, to connect the regions of the state together, you know, getting the Bay Area to the Central Valley, Central Valley to Los Angeles. It's 800 miles, 220 miles now, like I said, state-of-the-art electricity, state-of-the-art electrically-powered vehicles, steel wheel on steel rail. It's a proven technology. It's been going on for 40 years in Japan, so we have a little bit of catching up to do with them. In that whole time, there's only been two derailments, no fatalities, so it is the safest way to travel in the world today. And as well, fully grade separated, that anywhere where there's a road or other railroad, that they would be at a different elevation than the high-speed train as well, it'd be fully fenced, so the whole right-of-way is protected. And then one of the, I think the best aspects of this, there'd be no operating subsidy with this project once it's constructed, that we're looking at operating profit of a billion to $3 billion annually, so that there'd be no subsidy needed with this project. This map here shows you the, called the speed map, showing that darker area there in the middle, that's in the Central Valley. That's where we have the more straight and flat terrain where we can get up to that 220 miles an hour. You know, there's definite issues involved with designing a high-speed train. You can't be curving very fast. It's about a five-mile curve radius, because we want to, you know, make sure people stay in their seats while we're driving, you know, going on the train there. So that's where, you know, it's a big benefit and where we can really make up the time in the valley. And that's what makes it a critical part of the system, is the construction of the train in the Central Valley. You know, some of the other benefits, like I said, $3 billion annual revenues, 450,000 jobs, 160,000 construction jobs. And I think, you know, it's great, for every dollar invested in the system, it's a $2 return for the state of California. And as well, reduce the congestion, even people that aren't riding the train, it's getting people off of the roads so that there's more volume for either freight transit on the roads or for other people. So it's going to carry 117 million passengers annually. Along with the energy savings, we can meet 50% of the AB 32 greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal with the high-speed train. The San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District has recognized this, and that's why we're part of their Fast Track Plan for Clean Air to reach attainment by 2017 versus 2024. And as well, 22 million barrels of oil annually is saved from this. You know, you see there the energy savings as well. You know, and then another key aspect is the phasing and the funding. The current phasing of the project is San Francisco to Anaheim. This was decided in December by the High Speed Rail Authority Board, with the priorities being, within that first phase, of San Francisco to San Jose, Los Angeles to Anaheim. Those are sections that are more easily, easy to construct. We already have almost all of the existing right-of-way already owned by the state, and they're, you know, high ridership, so it'd be high revenue in those segments. And then as well, the Merced to Bakersfield segment. And it's key to get this done, as I said, because this is where we're going, 220 miles an hour, get this, these tracks laid, then we can get the different train sets out there, have a competition between Japan, Italy, France, whoever can build the best train for California, and, you know, that can operate, prove to operate at those speeds. So that's why it's a high priority for the project. That first phase estimated $30 billion with about a 10-year construction period. What we need to do is have the state funding in place. With that state funding, then we can go after the federal funding. Jim Costa's working on legislation at the federal level. Once we get the federal funding in place, get the environmental documents done, that's when the public sector said they can come, they're willing to come in with their private financing on the project. We say we already have the Passenger Rail Investment Improvement Act in place. California is way ahead of all the other states or groups of states in looking at high-speed trains. So I think for once, maybe California can be a take state versus a give state when it comes to federal, federal money. And as well, like those two bills there that Jim's putting in place, trying to get the, a high-speed rail authority at the federal level. We say we get the state and the federal funds, then we can come in with the private financing. We've talked with about 70 private contractors, vendors, to see what kind of opportunities there are out there for public-private partnerships. We've received so far, I think it's 25 expressions of interest for private participation of people's proposals on how they could invest in the system. We've also talked with the Calpers. They have $7 billion set aside right now for investment into, into public infrastructure. And so, you know, there's that private money that's out there. You know, and the key with that is that we want to have high ridership and high revenue. Know as, you know, you increase the prices, you might reduce the revenue, or increase the price, you might reduce the ridership. So it's the key to maintain that balance there, knowing that it's a system designed for citizens of California. So we want to, you know, keep that balance there, but make sure it's not an impact on the taxpayers. What we're currently working on is AB 3034. This is a amendment to the high-speed train bond. The current language that's on the ballot right now is focused, says it's San Francisco to Los Angeles. And so, the amendment in this, the bond language would open that up to the whole 800 miles, making it all eligible for financing with that $9 billion in the bond. And as well, that the priority for that bond money would go to segments that can have the least impact on that, on that $9 billion. So if you come in with additional private or other financing, then you can get a higher priority. But that's, that said, it's still the priority with Merced to Bakersfield because of, you know, the flat terrain and being able to test those trains. So we're still a high priority for, for construction. And as well, have lower construction costs compared to other areas, especially trying to get through the mountains. And as well, it says no station between Gilroy and Merced. That was to make sure that there are environmental groups that were concerned over the impact to the wetland areas around La Spanos area, that there wouldn't be any growth inducement issues from the high-speed train, as well as a 10% cap on funding for studies, so that, you know, the bulk of the money goes to construction of the project. And as the other portion of the AB 3034 is that you have to have your whole financing plan in place prior to getting any of the bond money, so that you have to have all three portions there available. What we're working on in the Central Valley is that they were selected in the, I believe the final EIR is out now, selecting the Pacheco Pass alignment for the high-speed train with doing improved commuter service. The Altamont Corridor shown there in pink. And as well, the AB 3034 amends the language to allow all $9.95 billion, you know, both sides of that funding available for improvements to the Altamont Corridor, as well as the Pacheco Pass alignment that serves the high-speed rail system better than the Altamont did. And then as well, what our, our group did was, our first task was looking at station location, the Visalia-Tulare-Hanford area. That was a requirement in the Tier One Environmental Document that was produced for the project, saying that before project-level environmental studies began, we had to look at feasibility of a station in the Visalia area. These shows some of the alternatives that we looked at, with those areas in blue there being the five, five locations, taking into account the design criteria that I talked about with the curve radius, that all stations, inline stations are all, there'd be two tracks coming into the station and two through tracks, and that's throughout the system, so that trains that aren't stopping in a station can maintain at speed. So we identified these locations, one there on, near Route 43, east of Hanford, in the Goshen area, those locations near 99 in Visalia, and then at the north end of Tulare. Now, all five of these different alternatives were adopted by the High Speed Rail Authority Board, I think it was in March, that these all will be looked at as alternatives in the project-level environmental document, that if the bond measure is passed and we get started, it'll probably be starting in January on, on that environmental document. Alignment A is just the carryover of the, what was called the preferred alignment in the Tier One Environmental Document. It's too far away from the population, you know, core of, in this area, so that would, that'd be the only alignment that wouldn't be, you know, would have a high-speed train station, you know, feasible at that location there. What's next? We're currently, we just got a contract with the Fresno COG utilizing Measure C money for high-speed, or for rail consolidation, as well as funding from the High Speed Rail Authority, looking at rail consolidation in Fresno, getting the BNSF, the UP, and the high-speed train within the UP corridor in Fresno. And as well, then, as that carries over into Madera, looking at what would be the better alignment versus, UP versus BNSF, through Madera into a downtown station in Merced. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions you might have on the, on the project.
Questions, gentlemen?
If I can, more briefly.
Yes?
I'll make it brief, I promise. We've had a lot of discussion lately about what to call this area here, whether we're the San Joaquin Valley, the Sequoia Valley. I know, I know we have a new name in the middle of nowhere.
We've always been that.
So.
Pass-through community.
Four years ago, I was on the city council in Visalia, we, we went to the High Speed Rail and said, "We have land, we'll give you, put a stop here." And I'm glad to see that there are alternatives in the EIR, but we all know how alternatives go. There's a preferred route, and then there's alternatives. So it's disappointing to see that, I'm glad to see that we made it to an alternative, but very disappointed that it didn't go any further than that. And it's sad to see that this turned into a very political process. I don't know if they tossed you, you knew they tossed you in the middle of the lion's den here, Eric, but there are folks here that are not happy about the way this process has gone and how political it became.
Well, I think, you know, the, you know, the Tier One Environmental Document said that we needed to identify, you know, look at the feasibility of a station in this area. And so that's what we did, was did a planning-level study to identify feasible locations. And then just the way the environmental process has worked, the California Environmental Quality Act, and as well as National Environmental Policy Act, both of which we have to follow in, in going forward with this project, it's basically as far as we can take it at this point in time. Because of the, we didn't get the funding that we needed, you know, in the last two years at the state level to continue with environmental studies, we were basically put on a hold at this point. So I think just the way the regulations work, this is as far as we could have gone at this point in time, because any feasible alternative needs to then be fully studied, you know, as far as, with the National Environmental Policy Act. So I think, you know, it was the best we could do with the funding level and with the regulations that are in place. So we'll be moving forward, then looking at these alternatives, you know, and identifying, you know, feasible location for a high-speed train station.
Buzzwordly?
Phase one, that's the two segments between Anaheim and Los Angeles and San Francisco and. Those are the, the first portions of phase one. Phase one is San Francisco to Anaheim. Now, that was done before the language in the AB 3034, so, you know, as I said, if that length, if that bond measure gets, if that language gets in the ballot, then there's the possibility of any other segments, if they can bring in their own financing, they can get a higher priority on the project. But that's currently what the authority has selected, is the San Francisco to Anaheim, that's through the Central Valley in Palmdale.
Has there been a recent economic analysis of this proposal?
As far as.
Cost.
Cost. The, it was the $30 billion is what was estimated, it was $30 to $32 billion for the construction of that phase one, San Francisco to Anaheim, is the most current.
You know, frankly, I think if there hasn't been a recent economic analysis, I think it is egregious to go out and use those numbers to people. We have road projects that started off at $48 million, $68 million, $88 million, and now we're looking at $100 million for 17 miles of a road. You have not acquired the right-of-ways for these roads through the valley. The costs are not going to be anywhere close to $40 billion. I think you can multiply that number by three or four times to get the actual cost. And I think before people vote for a bond issue, they should know what the costs are going to be. And I've heard this $40 billion thing thrown around for a long time, and I know what construction costs have happened in the last few years. It's, it's not fair to the public to use those numbers unless you've had a recent economic analysis to really give us some hard numbers. I think that is way off the mark. And when they, you know, use this, use this type of. And when they, you know, use this, use this type of, I, I think it's, it's disingenuous to say, "Well, we spent eighty, it'll take eighty billion to do this, but we can do it for half of that," and people go out and vote on that basis. I think that's not, I think, I think that's being unfair to people. I, I think that's lying to people, honestly. And then the subsidy, no subsidy. Are the, are the systems of Europe and Japan not subsidized?
No, they're, they're currently operating at a profit.
Yeah.
Once constructed, yeah, it doesn't include the, you know, the capital cost to, to put it in place, but then they operate, been operating at a profit.
Again, I, I would like to see up-to-date economic analysis that says they won't be subsidized. For instance, they're not going to be carrying a lot of freight, so we still have to have all the trucks on the roads and the freight system. It's going to be limited to passengers. Passenger service is a very expensive service, because you don't have the freight to help subsidize it. I, I just, I'm very skeptical of this whole thing. And I, and it bothers me that, that folks such as you are out advertising this matter, and we aren't really getting, I think, solid information. I, I, I mean, it's unconscionable that there's not a, a current economic analysis to be presented to people. People need to know what they're voting for. They're going to vote for a nine-point-some-billion-dollar bond, and their foot's going to be in the door. And then it's going to be, "Oh, my gosh, that's not nearly enough money. Now we've got to come back for ten billion, twenty billion, sixty billion, a hundred billion dollars." They wrote, they built a one-hundred-mile commuter train in New Mexico and almost bankrupted the state. I'm sorry, I, I'm a real skeptic of this. I'm not opposed to the project. I want to know what it's going to cost, as a, as a, not only as elected official, but as a citizen of this state. I don't want to be hoodwinked about the cost of something.
Well, that's part of what the AB 3034 language does, is that any segment prior to construction, it's got to have the financing in place to say, "It's going to utilize X number of billions from the, the bond measure, plus it has, you know, here's the financing that's, that we're going to get from the federal government, and then here's the public, the private sector funding that would be in place to pay for that segment." And that would be based on, you know, a more, a better engineering estimate, because we'll have done, you know, more of the engineering work at that point in time on, on those, those segments. You know, the, the difficulty right now in getting a, a better financing number, those numbers were done, the thirty-billion estimate was for the approval, you know, in December of two thousand and seven, so it's not, you know, that, that old of a number. But it's that we haven't been able to get to the, getting into better engineering estimates, because we haven't been able to do those engineering studies, because we haven't had that, you know, that, the, the funding in place to do that. So, you know, there could easily, you know, be some, you know, additional costs involved with that. But that's partly where, in getting the governor to fully support the project, was that portion of AB 3034 to say that prior to utilizing any of that funding from the bond measure, you have to have that full financing package in place of, of the federal and the private sector funding, and then, or any other of the funding sources. So that's a, a new protection that's put in place there, so that, you know, can hopefully alleviate some of those concerns you have. The other problem that we're facing is that it's, it's about, we estimate anywhere from one billion to two billion dollars extra every year that were delayed in, in building the project, because of escalating costs. So, you know, that's why, you know, our concern is to really, we want to get going as fast as we can on the project.
I, 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 I'm just really skeptical of, of the whole thing, and I just, I, I'm just nervous about the fact that the voters are going to vote for this, this first segment, and then it's going to be like, now there's no turning back. Without, even that, even as you've said it, I'm just concerned that it'll be hard to pull back once we get going. And I'm concerned, and I, I frankly don't think they, I think it will have to be subsidized. And that's the other question, that so if I'm paying, if I, you know, again, it's all based upon assumptions. You're assuming a huge ridership. Hundred, you're showing up to a hundred and seventeen million people annually in a state that's got, will have three hundred million people, we're saying at that point, or no, I'm sorry, fifty million people. So, for every, for every person in California, you'd have to have two riderships annually to meet this. And I don't know if you're talking about the whole length or, or certainly, I mean, I.
That's based on.
There's a lot of assumptions built in this thing, and it's all meant to sell. It's meant to sell to the public. It's going to be cheap, it's going to be, it's going to be a great way of transportation, and it's, and it's not going to cause, create a subsidy requirement. And I'm afraid we're going to get to the end of the, end of the story, it's going to cost multiple times more, and it's going to cost an annual contribution from the public to keep it going. And I think people need to see both sides of this equation. I mean, like, here's the assumptions, but what's reasonable?
I'll take those concerns back to the, the authority.
Supervisor Sheeda?
I have a real concern with the, the phrase of San Francisco to Anaheim. That implies that the middle section will be built, and they're building a system immediately from San Francisco to Anaheim. You, you used a key phrase in your presentation about as to where it's going to be built is going to be where there's cost sharing or, or revenues raised by a, a region to build the system. Well, we all know the central San Joaquin Valley doesn't have the revenue sources that we have in Southern and Northern California metropolitan areas. That disturbs me, because like Supervisor Worthy, in year five, the first five years, you're going to build a commuter line in Southern California and Northern California. What happens if you find out that this line is going to cost several billion dollars more, will eat up that bond money, that you'll never get to the central part of California, which is the backbone of this system? So I also have concerns about your projections of costs, because we may be out of money before we get the segment, the high-speed rail segment, and all we're left with is a high-speed commuter system in Southern and Northern California metropolitan districts, and we're sitting here again in the Central Valley without anything. When you, when you do your five-year plan in the metropolitan areas, in that plan, where are you going to put the test, test track for this train? Are you going to build that test track for the train prior to building the north and south end of this system?
Well, the, that, there'd be separate environmental documents done for each of those segments, so.
I don't care about the environmental documents. I care, where is the test track going to be built to see if this high-speed train works? Because you can't build it down there.
Well, it's going to be built between Merced and Bakersfield.
But that will be built.
And then that is the, the high-speed train, you know, that's, that is, becomes, that is the high-speed train system, which is also, you know, the tracks that are designed at a design speed, so that we can test those trains out at two-hundred-and-twenty miles an hour.
Well, that's my point.
Mm-hmm.
You have to build that test track before you can go into Southern and Northern California, because every train design has a different, there's quirks to every design. And I want to know, when are you going to build? And if that's the first phase, are you going to test this train in the Central Valley before you put the capital into the North and the South metropolitan areas?
Well, it's, it's the, three to five years is the construction period after, you know, the, if we get the bond measure passed for those two segments in Northern and Southern California, and it's five to seven years for the.
I think you're missing my point. My point is, you've got to test the train and determine what train you're going to use before you build the North and South sections. So without that test, how are you going to know what manufacturer, what train you're going to use for the whole line?
Well, one of the options looking at is that we can utilize, the, the gauge of the, the tracks is, is the same as, as other trains, you know, in existence today, so we can utilize, you know, non-high-speed trains for those segments, you know, and start running those with, with similar trains or different, you know, trains, while we then get, you know, get the, the actual trains tested that we're going to utilize for the high-speed train system.
So you're going to use existing rail now for that test?
Well, it'd be new, no, it's that we could get the, the, the tracks constructed that are be, you know, the high-speed train tracks, but prior to getting, you know, the train selected, that we can either have a contract with one of the, the rail, the train providers just to provide trains during the interim for those segments, or that we can utilize other types of trains that are in existence today. Once we get the, the actual test track, then we decide on, you know, what is the final requirements of, of the, of the trains that we need, you know, that are going to be the best for California, and utilize in California. So there's, there's some different options available, so that we're not, just because those are in place prior to getting the full test track in place, that we haven't, you know, gotten ahead of ourselves.
Things flow backwards to me, so, thank you.
Supervisor Ennis? You were in, then you're out, now you're back in.
Well, the thing that really concerns me is, is the state of California right now is sixteen to twenty billion dollars upside down. And you're going to go out and ask the voters to go deeper in debt when we can't even get a water bond, bond passed, which we desperately need. And if I had to choose between the two, I would desperately change to water over this rail. So that's my way of thinking. I don't know, maybe, maybe that isn't a way to look at it, but I look at it as an economic deal. And this state's in trouble big time, and we don't need to add any more to that debt before we figure out how we're going to get our water problem solved.
Don't disagree with that. But the, in looking at the, the debt ratio, in the, all the proposals the governor had, I think it was about a year ago, including water bonds, that there was still an allowable debt level to do the high-speed train bond and all those other bonds as well, although it still is then additional debt for the state.
Tough sell, sorry.
Well, that's what they paid me for.
Well, Mr. Von Berg, I appreciate your bravery in coming here to Teleri County today. I don't know which, if you drew the short straw or the long straw that sent you here today, but I do appreciate it. I actually appreciate this discussion. I wish it could go on a little bit longer. We talk about, in many of my worlds, one of which is the California Partnership for the San Joaquin Valley, we have this discussion, and there's many interesting points. I, I just briefly would say, Supervisor Cox, politics is involved in everything. And if politics hadn't been.
Even in the middle of nowhere.
If it hadn't been in this process, this would have been done a long time ago at a lot cheaper cost. But it, it's always that way, and it just becomes who gets what and who's first, and I just don't know that people are, are willing to look at any project from a statewide perspective. It, it's, all politics is local, and people start looking in their own backyard first. So it's difficult in the San Joaquin Valley, with our history, I think, for us to say, "Oh, we trust these people, and we believe that this will happen, and it will be a good thing." So, but I do appreciate you being here, and I'm sure the discussion will go on. Perhaps we'll invite you back, and.
After you have the economic analysis.
And, yeah, and perhaps you could bring another economical analysis for Supervisor Worthy.
We have the, Lehman Brothers are under contract to doing the financial portion of the project and doing those financial analyses, so we can talk to them about getting them back here that could, you know, answer more, better those questions, you know, more specifics on the financing plan in those areas. And I would say, I think politics must not have been involved. I stopped at the, the, the loop, the, you know, trying to get over the, that hatchet loop yesterday, and actually was fortunate to hit it right when a train was actually going through it all.
Oh, yeah.
Black there said, "They got that constructed in two years," so.
They didn't have environmentalists.
No. I don't think they had to worry about that. They just said, "Build it here, build it here."
Well, you know, now you said that, it is an interesting dynamic, because part of the presentation and what you hear is that this is going to fix the environment, and, oh, you know, we're all for this, and this is great, but it's actually those same folks that are probably holding up and making the cost even more outstanding because of the policies in place, whether it's SEQA, whether it's NEPA, you know, which came first that. We, we can get into a story here about three years to construct a half a mile of road because of a NEPA-SEQA discussion that took a trip by this supervisor back to Washington, DC, to finally be able to finish a road over ten dead elderberry bushes. Anyway.
Better now getting de-listed, by the way.
I digress. Hopefully, there's no elderberry bushes along the route.
Well, they're actually getting de-listed, so we don't have to worry about that as much anymore.
Well, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do appreciate it. We will invite you back. I'm sure this discussion is not over. Thank you. Okay. As usual, we are off schedule, behind schedule, but I'm going to go to item number two, as they've waited patiently, because this is a very exciting demonstration and project for the probation department, and I know they are anxious to share with us and let us see what they have going on. So, good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Jan Honatal, probation.
Peg Yates, IT Department.
We are excited to be here today.
Have you done a cost analysis?
And we believe it's money well spent.
Supervisor Worthy needs to know.
We have gone over money a lot on this project, and we have not gone over any money.
Well, there you go.
So in fact, I don't even think we're, we're there yet. I'm excited to be here because of what you guys did for us. Probation Department is thrilled to have had the opportunity to have one of the major IT systems put into the county probation departments in the state of California. I'll let my people share with you all their excited news. Peg is my partner. She has been very excellent about working with probation. Without IT, this whole thing would not have happened, without the board authorizing the money, without Gene Rousseau listening to our whining and wanting to have this IT system in. Oh, we did, we whined.
Don't be sharing with people how they get more money by whining.
We pointed out the important aspects of having those fundings. At any rate, I just wanted to thank everyone here for that. I think it's been a, a great opportunity. I'm not going to waste any time, because we decided we wanted a half hour, and they said, "No." So, I told Gene he could, you know, pull us out when he's ready to get rid of us, but I did want to at least say hello myself and thank you. And I'll let Peg speak. And then we're going to bring in our two very special people who have been handling this whole program, and that's Assistant manage, or Assistant Major, Assistant Chief, Kristy Meyer, and the IT manager for the project, Alicia Beal.
Thank you. This has been an extremely successful partnership. Everyone involved in the project has been committed to the success of this implementation. Thank you to you, the board, and CAO for your vision in approving the project and your support throughout the project. Today, we have a state-of-the-art and envied probation case management tool. Working together, we were able to get her done. Thank you.
Kristy, Alicia? Oh, and I have to introduce to everyone Eric Ferguson. He's our supervising probation officer, who's going to actually run this through the whole program.
Ah.
Well, we had a last-minute change in our PowerPoint yesterday, because the powers that be decided it was boring. So, we're here to present a new PowerPoint presentation, which we hope you will enjoy. It will be a little bit spicier than our original.
Does it have bullet trains going through?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. During July of two thousand and six, the board approved eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars for us to develop and implement a new case management system for the probation department. In addition to our heartfelt thanks to the board, we would also like to thank our chief probation officer, Janet Honatal, who had the vision in our original strategic plan to identify what a critical need this was for our department, and to Peg Yates for providing us the technical support in the form of Alicia Beal, the project manager, and Bob Duke. As a result of our need, Jan also had the foresight to send Cheryl Summers-Lane out to the state of California in the world of what we call PITMA, it's Probation Information Technology Management Group, whatever, who was able to come back with some really interesting ideas and suggestions about how we were going to proceed. From that point on, the team really consisted of Alicia and myself, as well as Beverly Conley from our department, she's really been the go-to person, and Bob Duke from, from IT. We began the process of evaluating evidence-based practices in the juvenile division with the introduction of the Positive Achievement Change Assessment Tool. And this allows us at the intake level, whether it's in custody or out of custody, to assess an individual's risk to the community. For detention purposes, from that stamp, from that point on, it goes to our adult, our juvenile investigations unit, where we're able to identify what their needs are, so that we can recommend appropriate programming. Due to the complexities of the juvenile justice system, which is far more expansive than the adult system, we decided early on that we would best start with the adult side of probation, so that we could get our bones in, learn from our mistakes, make the modifications as we went along. And it was truly a, a team effort involving hundreds and hundreds of hours of.
Of work, and, and it was a, it was a joint effort. We took, I didn't know, I don't know probation, I'm not a probation officer.
We took, I didn't know, I don't know probation, I'm not a probation officer, I admit that freely, although today I know much more.
Than you ever wanted to.
I've never wanted to know.
Second job.
I can tell you things, I just can't even repeat today, but it's, it's been, it's been amazing, and I know I don't want my little girl ever to go into the juvenile system. So, it's just, it's, I've learned so much. But the teamwork, there would be times when Kristi and I would argue back and forth and have some very heated discussions, but in the end, we would agree to disagree. And we would find the best path through those discussions to make the project work. That's something in talking, I've been to the PITMA organization that Kristi mentioned earlier, I've attended several of their meetings, that's where all of these technical geeks get together and talk about probation. And that's the one thing they don't have in all the other counties. They don't have somebody who can come in and, "I know IT, I know how to implement a project, I know how to make that happen. I don't know probation." Kristi knows probation, and all the other folks behind her know probation. So it's that teamwork together that really makes a project of this type work, 'cause we didn't just put in a computer system at all. We put in a new way of doing business. We revolutionized the way they did business. We changed it. They're now a paperless department, for the most part.
In fact, at this juncture, I'd like the people within our department who are involved in the design and development of the adult side of the system to please stand up. Reluctant, reluctant. Anyway, our kudos to them, because again, this was a very arduous and tedious process. During May and June of 2007, we provided over twenty hours of training to each of our staff who were involved in adult services, which equated to over nine hundred and eighty individual hours.
We advised staff at that time, right before we went live, well, actually, for a year, we've been telling staff, "Things are gonna change, your jobs are gonna change. What you did today, what they did before we went live, and what we did after we went live, completely different." They, they, before, they would be handed a piece of paper, and it would mean you'd have to do a piece of work. Now, no paper gets handed to them, and they're notified by the computer, or things happen automatically in the background. So we told them, "The first month's gonna be really hard." When I walked in, I spent a month on-site with the staff, went to all the different departments, helped them work through their workflow, and helped them to, to make that happen. It, it was really a together effort.
And on June 24th, we actually did go live on the adult side. We all survived it. I think that Monday morning, people were just terribly apprehensive, but within three days, I knew that the system was working when I had a DA investigator and a victim witness worker come into my office, inquiring about the possibility of having one of our adult offenders be relocated to Texas under the victim protection program, witness protection program. And I was able to go into the system, okay, enter his name, DOB, pull up his probation report, pull up the court order, asked them if they, you know, read the probation report, and they said, "No, they hadn't." So I was able to print it out, hand it to them, and say, "Are you sure the state of Texas is gonna want this guy?" Because I know I wouldn't in California. So it was that quick. We had done such extensive work in the back, in the backend, that it just, it worked immediately. Thereafter, during the period of July 2007 through February 2008, we developed a footprint based upon our work on the adult side for the juvenile side of Caseload Explorer. And employee committees met weekly for over a period of eight months. And our biggest concern was the transition of the information from the JLAN system, which was an antiquated case management system, into Caseload Explorer. We mapped workflow, we did data analysis, all in an effort to control what our output was going to be. And at this juncture, I'd like our juvenile people to please stand up and be recognized. And a particular recognition needs to go to Jennifer Brown, who's our principal clerk within juvenile services, who did extensive work on her own time, with the help of her trusty sidekick, Connie Sartucci.
When we built the system, we built it so that the bones of the system would be based off the adults. And then when you go to juveniles, the bones are still there, although juvenile law and the way juveniles are handled are much different. So there's a lot of differences, but that, there's a lot of people who move back and forth in probation from adults to juveniles and juveniles to adults, and we found that this has made it very easy or very simple for people to move back and forth. There's much less retraining involved, because they kinda understand the basis of the system and how it works.
And during March of 2008, over twenty hours of training was provided to each member of juvenile services, as well as our institutions, for a total of over 4,500 individual training hours, none of which was paid for by the county, by the way. We were able to get that STC certified, so that it was paid for by the state of California for once. On March 1st, 2008, juvenile and our institutions went live with Caseload Explorer. And we're now going to give you a presentation based upon issues of confidentiality involving both juveniles and adult offenders. We were unable to show you an actual live case, however, we created a case for you, which will allow you a demonstration of how we maneuver through the system. Eric Ferguson will present the case of Yosemite Sam.
Good morning. I'm gonna transgress a bit here. Whenever we were initially assigned a case as a probation officer, what would happen is you'd have a case file that would basically start off at the courthouse, and this file would have to find, then the file would have to find the officers at the numerous offices throughout the county. And so, that officer, once he had his case filed, then he would have, what's down here would be a field book, and then he would keep his notes of all his contacts of that client inside his field book, lock it in the trunk of his car at night, and the only way to get that information from him is to, in the middle of the night, is to wake him up, or get keys, go to the car, pop the trunk, pull the field book out, and then obtain his notes or what contacts have been done. If he goes on vacation, he would leave it on his desk, and so someone would have to go to his physical office to get that information. Now what we've done is we have Caseload Explorer, and Caseload Explorer, I've already logged in, and this is my overview screen. And when you look at the overview screen, it has my name on the tree on the left-hand side, and I can basically drill down and look at either adult or juvenile units. On my right-hand side, I have alerts and messages, and alerts basically are, are set up so that whenever there's any activity to my caseload, or someone's assigned to my caseload, I will have an alert on the right-hand side. And as we see, all my information on the right-hand side is to my case Yosemite Sam, and the different dates, and also it's the different officers that have had contact with my client. When you look at the overview screen, we've developed an overview screen, because what probation officers need is just bio-information, critical information for officer's safety for us to do our work. On the left-hand side is all our bio-information regarding the client, because whenever we look at most of our clients, we'll see that most clients in the juvenile or the justice system will use AKAs, will give false names. So now we can actually track their false names, and also look at when they've used their false names. With Yosemite Sam, what I did when I developed him, I actually went out and got some of his names that he used in different roles, part of Looney Tunes. So he was known as the Duke of Yosemite in Chili Code Stan in two of his films. You have data bursts, data bursts are very critical, because they'll also give fake data bursts at the time of their arrest. Yosemite Sam was actually born July 4th of 1945, that's when he was first drawn. We can look at their driver's license, social security number, have information regarding their employer, so if we wanna know where they're employed, if we're going out there to see another client or need to contact him, and we know he's working, we know where he works at, when we're looking at the employer information, we can drill down into it and basically get information regarding the employer.
Most of the time.
Drill down into the information for the employer and basically find his address. It shows when we've done any form of assessment on this client to determine their risk needs, and in this case, we did a proxy risk and found that he was at a low level. When we look at the photographs, we have a photograph of our client, so that we can see what he looks like, but we also have other photographs behind here, so we can look at, you know, tattoos that he may have, such as Bugs Bunny, or maybe, you know, a desert rose. Other critical information that we're looking at photographs of is we go out and see people in their residence, so we have a photograph of his residence, and then another critical aspect would be an overview map of what his residence looks like. So that way, if we're going out and doing a search, or going out with other law enforcement, we can basically draw a map, attach it to his file, have that accessible to the officers, so that when we're going in, need to do an entry, or if he's basically barricaded himself inside the home, we know where all the entry or exit areas are, so we can keep not only the probation officer, but other law enforcement with us, safe.
I see he lives in Three Rivers.
Yes.
Yes, he lives in Three Rivers.
You like a map? Eric, show the map.
So, we have a mapping system in the system, so that whenever the officers go out, because we have so many clients on, we can basically one-click get a map. It'll show us exactly where he's living, and so that way, we can basically save time when we're driving to our different client's location. So, rather than using old Thomas Guide's point over and flipping through and trying to find the person's address and doing some guess, the first attempt, we can basically just pull up the map and go from there.
I assume that the, I know the answer, but also there's the ability to edit things, then?
Yes.
So if you have an address for him, and it's, there's a new address-
If I, if I have addresses, as I show on the backside, you'll see that he's had two addresses previously, and will continue to have a history, 'cause we find that a lot of our defendants' clients basically move, and sometimes they'll move from one house and back and forth, and back and forth, so we can actually see how, when they're basically going, and we'll have history, so that if they do become non-compliant, and we can't locate them, and we issue a warrant, we'll also have other addresses that we can look at, that we've known, hangouts where he knows to reside there previously. When we look at the probation department, we basically work for the courts, so every client has gone through the system, has been found to, or admitted to, or pled out to a crime. Here, we're looking at the cases, and when we look at the cases, we can look at, you know, what charges they've been charged with. My Yosemite Sam, he has willful discharge of a firearm with gross negligence, and also public intoxication. So that's what got him into the system. We can look and see who the assigned officer is to that case, and we can also look if there's any associates with that case. And with, with his case, in this one, he has an attorney, who is Marvin the Martian, and we, we have contact with attorneys, and it's kind of interesting for us, because sometimes people come and misidentify themselves, or call on the phone. So now, whenever we look into the system, we can pull up his attorney, drill down in, and actually get a photograph and information regarding his attorney. It also assists us if we need to give the attorney information regarding restitution, or any other kind of documentation on pending cases, we can refer that right over, and streamline the system, rather than having to trail them and follow them in court and have to continue that case. We have events. The events are all activities that we do with this client. And as you can see, we have different types of search contacts, testing, and each one can be done. We can, we can go through, we can filter them on the right-hand side, so we can just see all of our contacts, or we can just see every time he was tested, or see every time he was, had a search done at his residence or of his person. Also, you can see who entered the information. Previously, whenever we worked and we had the binder, if I was out and I made contact with another person's probation officer, if I knew they were even on probation, then I could basically have contact with them, talk to them, then track that officer down on the phone, and have them add it to his field notes. Now what we can do is, with the AirCard and a laptop, I can go right there, contact the defendant, make my entry, and then basically, every time I go in, you can see who has had contact with them. We have different officers throughout the county that are working in the schools or in juvenile, and now, whenever they go out to the house to see their juvenile client, they can actually see my adult client and make contact with them, which would make us more effective. The other factor that is very nice about this system is we have our terms and conditions of probation, which are the orders of the court that they have to be in compliance with. Previously, those would be kept in his file, and I may have, you know, a few of the most important ones to me in my field notes that he's supposed to comply with. Now, whenever I'm out there, I can actually look up not only my client's terms and conditions, I can also look up the defendant that's not on my caseload to find out what he is supposed to be in compliance with, so I can do a compliance check on him also, when I make contact with Documents in our business are very important, and a lot of our documents are either generated by the system now, so we're not, we're saving a lot of keystrokes for the officer, or we're taking documents that have been generated by other agencies and scanning them into our system. The difference between the ones you see here is anything that has been scanned in or brought into the system are in dark, and anything that has been developed by the system are in red. So when you look at, like, an information for a court document, which is a minute order for this client, I can basically go in, pull up his minute order, and then I can review the minute order and get the pertinent information to find out what has happened to that defendant in court on that day. We're currently bringing these over from Sustain and attaching them to Caseload Explorer. We also have ones that are self-generated, and, and when we do self-generating, we have Word forms, and so we can look at all the different forms that we can basically just create at a click of the button, which, for a field officer or probation officer out there, it's gonna save them a lot of time, 'cause now, rather than just filling out their name and address and phone number on every form, it's automatically generated in there for them. As I said before, we have the associates, we have our employer, and I'm just gonna show that it works, 'cause I know it works, so that I can look and show where he is employed at. If there were multiple offenders working at that site, I could basically pull him up and would have every offender that works for that employer at that site, so then if I was going out there and I wanted to make contact, I knew who, that I have other offenders there, and so I can make contact with them also.
Elmer Fudd?
It will also help with the schools and the juvenile, and also, we can go and make contact with them. We also have treatment facilities and treatment providers, which are very important to probation. Here, with the treatment provider, we have not only, they can have information regarding what kind of programs they give, and also the context, because a lot of these providers have multiple case managers or therapists, and so you can find your person that's assigned to him, and in this case, he's assigned to Elmer Fudd, who is a senior management counselor, and, and basically go from there. You can look at scars, marks, and tattoos, which are very critical, because now, whenever we put all their scars, marks, tattoos inside the system, we can basically run a query and look for an offender, so the sheriff's department or local PD can come to us and say, "We know that we have a guy by the last name of, or last name of Sam, and he has a tattoo of Bugs Bunny on him, and we don't know who he is, and can you see if you have anybody that matches that description in your system?" So I can basically run a query, give them a list of potential suspects that match their description that they've given to us. We have several attributes, which basically give us information regarding their citizenship, their income, their type of employment, their alcohol and drug history, all their identifying numbers, be it FBI, CIA.
You can tell Eric is very excited about this system.
The, the one thing that, that you have to say is that this will make all of our officers more effective.
And in fact, it has. The adult system is paperless for all new offenders, and at this juncture, we have a presentation for the CAO, Jean Rousseau. Would you please step forward?
Give you a green card.
It's good to see our wall is working.
He didn't waste any time, does he?
You are now the proud recipient of our last batch of little green cards. No more. We also have the ability to, juvenile court and juvenile detention facility data is now entered in real time. One of the things we realized- entered in real time. One of the things we realized during the course of designing the juvenile site is that we really could no longer afford to wait for courtroom clerks to enter information into the court system. So that we put office assistant individuals in the court so that all of the information regarding what happens in court is entered in real time, as well as terminals at our juvenile detention facilities. So that staff did not have to move off-site or go into a supervisor's room to enter data or update information regarding the behavior of a juvenile. Court reports are now being completed by voice activation. We have almost reduced our dependence on word processing staff to about 99%. Our juvenile system is 90% paperless. Juvenile institutions are 80. And we have information available at our fingertips. Like Eric pointed out, one just small ability is now, if we have a person with a tattoo that the CHP is looking for, we can go in and run that tattoo.
I actually, in the institutions, when we went live the very first day, I was there working with them. We worked onsite with them as well as the adults for several weeks. And the first day we were there, some police officer from Woodville called up and asked us a question about one of the offenders. And I was able to work with the officer and show him how to go right in and find that offender and fax his stuff over to all his information over because it was already in the system. We also are doing, we also did a lot of integration with the system. We have integrated on the juvenile side, the mugshot system into Caseload Explorer. Caseload Explorer will be the base system, and then we'll integrate other tools in with it. So we've integrated mugshots. We have integrated, we're going to integrate this month, assessments. She talked about the assessments piece so that that's all integrated. We're looking at another integration piece that'll be rolled out later this year, where we'll be integrating the Domain One, what they call the Domain One of the pact, and all of the demographic information into assessments, which will help with the 4E case plan. It will save literally hours' worth of work for each offender by being able to integrate all of that information and pass it between the systems. We're also using our middleware product to help us with integration going down the road with people like the sheriff's office and the public defenders.
We also now have the ability to move forward on evidence-based practices, being able to evaluate both our caseloads, our programs, and our outcomes, which is the whole reason for this. What's next? We're going to continue to evaluate our business practices and improve efficiencies.
We're looking at the, we have eliminated all but one, which we're going to eliminate the one Excel spreadsheet.
We had hundreds of them where we tracked data. They're gone, all except for one because we can't fairly enter the information on these particular individuals into our system.
And we have, there's no more hash marks. They used to sit there in their offices. They would make a contact or do something and make little hash marks and add them up at the end of the month and put them into some report that would go up, you know, different chains.
To us.
Yeah. And so that's all gone. The system now does all of that for them automatically behind us.
We're also going to be adding additional adult and juvenile assessment tools, particularly in the area of sex offenders, which is required by state law. That will be added. We're in the process of developing and implementing the accounts receivable piece. That's the last piece of our system. And it should be noted that this piece is being anticipated by a number of counties statewide because of its flexibility and ability to generate the kind of documentation that everyone wants. We will be, we have integrated partially with the sheriff and the DA system, and we will continue working on that. We're now fully compatible with the state probation, court and probation statistical system that we're required to enter. We simply send it up in batches rather than having to do it mechanically. And the bottom line is, we have data, data, data. I can't tell you the number of surveys that I've literally completed at my kitchen table at night from the state, doing hash marks, going through, doing samplings of the type of cases that we have. If you called me today and asked how many people we have on probation for auto theft, I could tell you. How many people we have on probation for domestic violence offenses, I could tell you. How many people we have living on East Princeton, which happens to be my street, I could tell you. So the system is extremely flexible and the ability to generate reports, both ad hoc reports and probably 60 canned reports that we designed on the front end is just phenomenal. And I cannot thank you enough. We will continue to work forward with this. We are so excited. It has literally changed the way we do business.
One thing that I'd like to say is, this isn't just, and doesn't have to be just one department adventure or process. There are other departments out there who can benefit from workflow, workflow analysis, business flow. The Assessor for one, we're working on a project to promote there. And this can be done, if it can be done here in probation, it can be done with the Assessor, it can be done with other departments in the county. We've done it also with the public defender as well. It just, we are using the software in a different way than everybody else. We've talked with the state of California, we've looked at the, what the other counties are doing. They have the same software, they're just not using it the way we're using it.
And we are, we're using probably 80% of the, of the system, which is really incredible and really good. As the plus system of California. Thank you.
The next step will be the CEO will walk down.
I apologize for us going over time. We knew we were dead meat. It is very exciting to us. I'm not sure about the audience. But at any rate, we thank you for your time. And if you have any questions for Peg or I, please let us know.
Well, it was, you know, obviously, yes, you went a little bit over the time that was allotted. But, you know, I for one, don't want to curb anybody's enthusiasm. And what speaks to me about this is, I remember when I first came on this board, started down a path of, you know, we have got to get smarter in how we do things. And, you know, the first question someone asked me, "Will you be using a computer?" And I take note of that, Mr. Vanderpool. I said, "You mean it doesn't come with the job?" And they said, "Well, no, we can get you one." But, you know, predecessor didn't have use for one. And I've been on a tear ever since then. And certainly, I'm not trying to take credit for this. This just excites me as much as it does you because, once again, we are using technology. And the day that all the departments involved can speak to each other, I mean, I hope I'm still here. I will be very, very excited that day. This is great work. And it may not seem exciting to any others, but to me, it's very exciting. And I know all that went into it, all the caring. I'm very pleased that you brought your staff with you this morning so that we could let them know how important this work was, that they did struggle long and hard with it, I'm sure. But it's great, and I'm excited. And I know you want to talk supervisory.
Well, I just had one question. And that is, I know there's a lot of field work done by our staff. And do they have portable laptops that they can enter data and do still electronically?
Increasingly, we are, we're adding them on a regular basis as part of the field caseloads. That was sort of the outcome, the offshoot of this is that we found that it was really the way to do business. But, you know, finances, you kind of go into it slowly. But yes, we've ordered a lot of laptops.
Because the Air District has done the same sort of thing. And so a field person who's out there like doing an inspection, the same thing, they've got the laptop, they can go right online, pull up that file information, it's right there in front of them. And same concept, it would be very helpful.
Absolutely. And I do want to thank Chairman Conway because you did start this whole process, I believe, back when you were chair and when I first came here. So I thank you.
Important to me. Supervisor Shinn.
I think the, what you've carried this technology to is absolutely fascinating. My hats off to the staff who've put this together and spent all the hours. I have one concern. And my concern is that your laptops should have a little loop in them with a handcuff on the other side. Because if you lose that computer, we're in deep trouble, boys and girls. This is very confidential information. So I wish you would please address that security issue with the employees that have them.
Much of the security is addressed by, most of this data is stored on a server, and the server sits behind a firewall. So it's not actually resident on the laptop. They have a wireless card on the laptop that connects them to the server, and you have to be able to get into the network to get there. So.
It's got to be as secure as being locked in somebody's trunk.
That's the files that we used to have.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, it's a great program, streamlining and saving hours and money. It's good.
Thank you very much. Another step forward fits in with the strategic plan, all of the, all of our plans to become more technologically sound. It is exciting and it's great. And thank you very much, both of you, and everyone that was here. Let's give yourselves a hand. Okay, we've got lots of business to do. I'm wondering, yeah, we, let's do consent and give people a chance to get back to work because then we have to go to closed session for 15 or 20 minutes, and then we can come back to our timed items. So, gentlemen, consent calendar. Questions, additions?
Motion approved, seven through 37.
Second.
Motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously. Board needs to go to closed session. We will be there approximately 15 or 20 minutes. We'll return and then start our timed items, our 9:30 timed items. I apologize, but we have to do it.
Did you catch, did you catch where the guy says they're going to make up time as you're going through the valley? Does that sound like stops to you?
No, no.
It's like, they're going to hit that thing.
I mean, these things tend to, they get the foot in the door. And then the price, and what can you do? Once you're, you know, you're in for a dollar, in for the whole thing.
And I mean, and the public needs to know this. I mean, this is propaganda.
Oh, yeah.
All designed to get people to vote for something without really understanding what they're getting.
The icing looks pretty good.
I think it's going to be, you know, it'll be three or four times, we're estimating. Then I think it would be a huge subsidy required annually to keep that thing going.
Well, I guess they're looking for support. Call Janet, Janet Ishi over in Fresno. And since you're here, I need you to call.
Okay, we're back in session and way behind our 9:30 timed items. Actually, 9:30 means we'll start not before 9:30. But I know some of you are here awaiting the agenda as printed. And I need to get to the 9:30 timed items. And we'll start with item number four, which is a public hearing. Request from RMA. Morning, Mrs. Mercer.
Good morning. Lori Mercer, Resource Management Agency, Community Development and Redevelopment. I'll make it really quick. This public hearing is being held to provide citizens an opportunity to comment on the commitment of $62,000 from the Community Development Block Grant Program Income revolving loan account to the current state grant number O6 STBG 2598. A sign-in sheet for recording attendance at the public hearing is available, and signing is voluntary. Additional information is available upon request. And citizens are encouraged to ask questions and comment on the proposed activities. The county was awarded this grant to provide for water system improvements in the communities of Plainview, Tulleville, and Rich Grove. The projects will alleviate severe health and safety hazards plaguing the water systems in these communities. Jurisdictions are allowed to supplement open grant activities with the CDPG program income funds. However, a public hearing is required to keep citizens informed of the expenditures from the revolving loan account. It is recommended that the county commit these funds to the grant to provide additional gap financing and assist with the rising costs associated with the construction of materials, construction and materials. By providing this additional funding, the county is continuing a long-term commitment of making these capital improvements affordable to low-income residents within each of these communities. All of Tulare County programs are implemented in ways that are consistent with the general plan and commitment to fair housing and equal opportunity. Citizens will not be discriminated against. That's the presentation. If you have any questions, glad to answer them.
Questions from board members? Seeing and hearing none. It is a public hearing. So I will open the public hearing now. Anyone that wishes to address support on this matter, now is the time. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion and action.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number five, public hearing, request from RMA to deny an appeal. Morning, Mrs. Kates.
Morning, Chairman, Chairman Conway and members of the board. I'm Beverly Kates. I'm with the Resource Management Agency Project Review Division. This is Dana Mettman's presentation. The item before you is an appeal of zoning administrator denial of special use permit number PSP 07140 CA. The appeal was filed by Verizon Wireless. Verizon proposed a 100-foot-tall wireless communication facility with accessory equipment to be located at 34455 Sierra Drive, which is on State Route 198, approximately 1,300 feet south of Sierra Drive, northeast of Lemon Cove. The site is zoned AF, foothill agricultural, and contains a water tank and vacant land. The surrounding properties are all zoned AF and contain four or five rural residences and vacant land. To the north, Lake Kewee. Aerial view of the site. The site is in a foothill region with the site location being on top of a steep hilltop surrounded by rolling hills. The elevation is approximately 1,356 feet. On February 21st, 2008, at the first meeting of the zoning administrator, staff recommended a categorical exemption to CEQA. The proposed site, which is located approximately one mile east of Road 248, falls within a 16-mile segment of State Route 198, which is currently being completed, completing the Caltrans requirements for state scenic highway design. Viewshed protection is a key component of Caltrans requirements for maintaining scenic corridors. As you can see by this map, the site is located within the mapped viewshed of State Highway 198. In addition, the site is upon a hilltop with visibility from sections of State Route 198. At the February 21st meeting, the zoning administrator invalidated the categorical exemption that was recommended by staff as an exception to the exemption based on Article 19, whereby a particle, a project which, that is ordinarily insignificant, may be particularly sensitive environment be significant. And a categorical exemption shall not be used for a project which may result in a damage to scenic resources. The zoning administrator citing the sensitive location of the proposed project requested the applicant to seek out alternatives to the proposal, such as co-location with another facility. Terminus Dam was suggested as an alternate site, and Verizon was encouraged to co-locate where the county's own repeater is located. The February 21st meeting of the zoning administrator continued to March 13th in order to give the applicant adequate time for further research. Meanwhile, Phil Deffenbaugh, manager of the U.S. Army Corps Lake Kewee office, verified availability of space at Terminus Dam. The zoning administrator reviewed this, was presented with this coverage map illustrating three alternatives. Current cellular coverage of the area by Verizon is represented in yellow. Coverage from the proposed site, south of State Highway 198, is seen here in blue. in blue. Coverage from the alternate site at Terminus Dam is seen here, also in blue. Upon examining the maps provided, the zoning administrator determined that the difference between the two coverage areas was minimal and that the alternate site, Terminus Dam, provided effective coverage for Lake Kewee and State Highway one ninety-eight while at the same time eliminating the significant impact to the sensitive environment and scenic resources that the Weldon property location could create. In addition, the alternate site at Terminus Dam provided coverage to the community of Lemon Cove, which is currently without cellular coverage by Verizon. You looking south from Terminus Dam, subject to any questions you may have. Whoops, sorry. That concludes staff's report. Thank you.
I'm sure, one question?
Please, supervisor.
Uh, the, the, the maps are very telling, but the one thing I was wondering about is that what they don't show would be where the people are. So, in the, the one where they were, the preferred alternative here by the applicant, does it reach a lot more people than would the one on the, on the, the Terminus Dam? Yes. Well, there's more, there's a little bit more coverage, but, I mean, does it hit a lot of people?
Teresa Simonas, Tulare County Zoning Administrator. I'm familiar with this project here. Um, this is, the Weldon property shows that there's actually a gap in coverage in Lemon Cove. Lemon Cove is incorrectly marked on this map. Lemon Cove is, in fact, here between avenues three twenty-four and three twenty-eight, whereas you do get coverage for Lemon Cove looking at location at the Army Corps of Engineers site. Most of the other areas match up insofar as traveling both east and west on the highway. You are still gonna have areas where you are dropping your, your, your call. And, um, other than lake coverage, which is the same, there are limited other residences in the area.
Oh, I'm sorry. You guys threw us some questions. I have some myself, but I suppose they can wait. Okay, this is a public hearing, which I'll now open to anyone who would like to address the board on this matter. Seeing and hearing none? Okay. Now seeing and hearing someone.
Good morning. My name is Jillian Furia. I'm here representing Verizon Wireless. I just wanna give you a little background in addition to what staff has given you on the proposed project. It is a one-hundred-foot monopole located on a property south of Lake Kewee Dam. The ground equipment is gonna be at the base of the tower with the associated equipment that we need to run the site. The, this improvement is not, will not only enhance wireless coverage in the area that, that this area currently lacks in service, but it also will enhance public health and safety in the area for residents and tourists. In addition, the proposed project will provide backup system to landline phone services. This is not only important for current and potential customers, but also for local agencies. A State of California, California Department of Forestry, who rely on Verizon Wireless as part of their communication systems. In addition, Tulare County Sheriff has also contacted Verizon about improving their service in the area. And also, as we just heard with the probation department's presentation, they, they do use wireless to update their information in the field and they are a Verizon customer currently. I do have hard copies of my presentation if the supervisors would like them.
We have them, don't we?
That's ours.
The project was originally heard by the zoning administrator in February. At that time, she had asked us to provide additional information regarding the Army Corps of Engineers site. At the second zoning administrator hearing, we provided evidence showing that the Army Corps of Engineers site does not meet the coverage objective of the site location, which is Highway one ninety-eight or State Route one ninety-eight and the Lake Kewee area. We believe that the zoning administrator erred in her decision and that the, we asked the board to overturn the decision and approve this project. Here, this just gives you an overview of the area in relation to the Lake Kewee area. This right here is the proposed site location. Across the lake, just a little north, is the Army Corps of Engineers location. This down here marks the Lemon Cove, Verizon's Lemon Cove site, though we do have a site located there that does cover this area. This here, this is the photo simulations of what the site would look like when it was built. This view is looking westbound along Highway one ninety-eight up toward the site. I don't know if you can see it here. Right, the site's located right here. This is located looking east off the dam access road. Highway one ninety-eight is up here. The reason the photo sim wasn't taken from one ninety-eight is because of where the road is and the terrain in the area is not visible. So, in order to be able to give a photo simulation from this vantage point, this is the place where it had to be taken. And then here's another photo simulation that's looking southeast from Dry Creek Road. The site is right here. This here is a visibility map that we had put together that shows where the site's gonna be visible from State Route one ninety-eight. The purple here indicates where the south, the site will be visible westbound, and the pink indicates where the site is gonna be visible eastbound. As you can see, because of the terrain in the area and the winding road of one ninety-eight, the site's only gonna be visible from small portions of one ninety-eight as you're kinda going through the canyon. So, you're really gonna have to look, look for it to try to see it. Also, I'd like to clarify that the project location is not located within a scenic corridor overlay zone and that Caltrans has identified six hundred and sixty feet from the edge of the right-of-way as the area being in concern when they determine state designation, designation for the scenic highways. The proposed site is located thirteen hundred feet from State Route one ninety-eight. The project, as designed, was sent to Caltrans for review and Caltrans has issued no comment to the project. To hold the applicants, to hold us to standards that are not yet in place with the county and have not yet been adopted is unfair. The proposed, the general plan update and the, the scenic map that was shown are standards that are not currently in place. The site is designed, is consistent with the Tulare County general plan and all the applicable elements, and this was a comment, that comment was taken directly out of the staff report on page three. It's important to note that during both the public hearings, there's been no public opposition to the site, and this site is crucial for both the residents, tourists, and commuters along State Route ninety-eight. I'm gonna pass it to my colleague, Alex Getze, who's going to discuss the Army Corps of Engineers location.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Alex Getze. I work with Verizon Wireless and I'm here to talk really briefly about some of the alternatives that were looked at by Verizon here. As you can see up on the board, this is a photo of the existing Army Corps of Engineers tower. This is a thirty-foot-tall lattice tower structure. This was actually identified by the site acquisition group when we first went out in this area as a possible site for us to locate on. You know, whenever we go out, we always look for existing facilities that we can use. This has a nice road up to it. There's utilities nearby. And from all intents and purposes, from, from the development group's standpoint, this is a good location. The problem is, is that this location just simply won't serve as the coverage objective. And although we like to do things easy and inexpensive when we can, you know, our goal here is to provide coverage to our customers in this area, and we can't do things on the cheap. We gotta provide things to the coverage objective, and the site that we chose does that. So, this is the thirty-foot-tall tower. The maps that were shown by staff actually discussed this as a one-hundred-foot tower, and I believe that that staff, staff's possible desire to have us replace this facility. But, you know, as you can see here, this is only thirty-foot tall tower at this location. One of the reasons why this simply won't work is because of the vast difference in elevation between what we're, I'm gonna call the Army Corps site and our subject property. As you can see, the Army Corps site here is at approximately nine hundred and thirty feet above mean sea level, whereas our site is about twelve hundred and seventy-nine feet. That's about a three hundred and fifty-foot difference in elevation. That's really seen from the Army Corps site not being able to pick up the coverage along State Highway one ninety-eight. Specifically, this hill here, where I'm kind of circling the mouse, where we have the proposed location, it, the coverage drops off around this hill because this hill blocks the, blocks the service. That's further shown by these photos here. These are photos taken from the Army Corps site. The proposed Verizon facility would be right here. This hill right here is called Limecliff Hill, and Limecliff Hill blocks the service as does this. Here, this is a better one here. This is, and this hill blocks the service around the lake and Highway one ninety-eight. So, although the Army Corps site might service the lake itself, it's not gonna service the travelers along the road. And we think that that is absolutely critical from a health and safety standpoint. If we, you know, that's a curvy road up there. If somebody breaks down or somebody, you know, God forbid, has an accident, you know, we need to provide service to folks along that road, and that's one of the main things that we're looking to do here. Also, I think it's important to note that when we're talking Army Corps of Engineers site versus our proposed facility, I, my personal opinion is that the Army Corps of Engineers site is gonna be much more visible to users of the lake. I mean, you can see here that, you know, that the Army Corps site has a direct view of kind of the marina area, and it's still gonna, it would still be a one-hundred-foot-tall facility. So, I think we're really kind of comparing apples to apples here in regards to visual in the area, but it's, it's a complete apples-to-oranges comparison when we're talking about coverage. The proposed site has much better coverage than the Army Corps site, and they're both the same sort of a design. So, when we're talking about which one's better, I think you, you, you gotta say that we have to err on the side of coverage to provide the needed service here. And then from here, I'm gonna go ahead. We have with us Verizon's radio frequency engineer. Her name is Linda Lascano. She is the RF engineer that designs and maintains the Verizon network, and so she can, she's gonna address what this site's designed to cover and answer any and all technical questions that you might have because I am very ill-suited to do so. So, Linda?
Thank you. Thank you, supervisors. The next map, this is kind of a, a template of just of...
Linda, can we ask you to make sure you're in the mic?
Oh.
Just pull it, there we go.
That better? A little shorter?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyway, just the, the next map will cover what, what this is trying to state. Basically, red squares are existing sites, and we do cover Lemon Cove. We have a site built for Lemon Cove.
Next map.
Okay. And then you'll see some dark red stars showing the candidate A, which is a Corps of Engineers, and then candidate B, the Weldon. And I've also indicated where we have dropped calls or ineffective attempts, where you're trying to set up a call and it'll never go through. It just sits and waits and waits and waits until it drops. And that being the, the area. And our expectations is to cover this area in here, right in here. And also, I'd like to address that there are a difference in my coverage plots today than there were, than they were previous. And that's why during the, the period where we all went through the analog sunset, where analog went away and now we're only digital, Verizon did go ahead and, and change the way some of our modeling tools work, trying to do a more, a truer picture to the digital. And along with that, they also changed what's called their cluttered models. And they take and they say, instead of where we had it before, we, our, our modeling tool kinda was just across the board. Well, now they took a team and actually drove the different areas to better show that, you know, in the Sierras, we have trees and, and, and that type of thing, instead of water, ocean opposed to a lake, that type of thing. So, these plots today more, are, show a truer picture of what, what happened should we cover, or this being our current coverage, what it's truly doing. And here, again, is the Lemon Cove site and showing that we do serve Lemon Cove. This is the Lemon Cove site here. This, again, would be closer to the, the center of where Lemon Cove is. And that's our Woodlake site right there. So, we do cover in this area. This right here is the objective of the site. These two triangles being where we drop or have ineffective attempts. Again, because of the terrain plots or, or maps shown before, you can see why, because of the terrain. This here, this bright pink would be the preferred location on the Weldon property. This is the site being here. And this shows the cover that it, that, again, through the modeling tool, that we would be proposing at one hundred feet overall height. And because of terrain, we would still have, again, a hole here. One of the reasons where we get these drops also, to back up just a little bit, is we do have baseline drivers. And in Northern California, which we're considered a part of, my group of the Verizon team, that would be from top of the grapevine, north. Our, our testing drives approximately nine thousand miles of nothing but test miles. It's baseline drive, and they drive and drive to find out where our holes are, or where do we drop? Where do we have ineffective attempts? And this is where we gather the data. Why we would stop in this area also is because of our Lemon Cove. When we built Lemon Cove and Woodlake, they started driving out this area. And through time against, through the, through the funding and, and saying, okay, we can build out this way, that's where the funds come from, and, and, and now we're here trying to cover this way. As soon as we can build something in here, we'll go out further and then finally, you know, get to Three Rivers, which has been long sought after from our sales team, customer input. So, that's why this area also now. This shows the Corps of Engineers at thirty feet, that being there. And although there was discussion about covering here in Lemon Cove, again, that's not the objective of the site. The objective is here, which it will not cover in here. And then this is just a summary of the, of the plots laid on top of each other, again, showing that the, this candidate here would cover the objectives of this site. Have any questions? Sorry, just checking.
Okay. Does that conclude your presentation?
Second.
Sure.
Are you done, Linda?
Yes.
Do you have any questions of Linda before she sits down, or we can always have her come back up? No, not right now. I just wanted to briefly discuss, I spent about forty-five minutes yesterday hauling up some businesses in both the kind of Lemon Cove and Three Rivers area, and just really kinda cold-calling folks to see what, you know, if they thought that there was a need out here. And I wanna go ahead and give copies of my notes that I made to the clerk so that she can pass them out to you. But overwhelmingly, in the span of forty-five minutes, I mean, everybody that I spoke with, except, with the exception of one person, you know, was really excited about the addition of wireless coverage out here. I mean, you can see quotes here. I spoke with Scott Mulcannon, and if I'm mispronouncing his name, I apologize. He's the vice president of the Sequoia Foothills Chamber of Commerce. And his quote was, you know, definitely lots of people are trying to use their phones here. It's not a mere inconvenience, but it's a safety issue as well. I'm not gonna read all these to you. But some of the highlights, you know, are from, you know, Linda at, you know, Design Build, you know. She said it'd be great to have competition with AT&T. As I spoke with everybody up there, AT&T is pretty much the only game in town when it comes to the Three Rivers area, and they're all excited about another carrier coming in here that would provide additional coverage, both, you know, for them buying it themselves, but they also have a lot of customers that come up there. And if they don't, you know, if their service doesn't work, then they can't conduct their business and can't use their service. Additionally, I think it's important to note that nobody, you know, not AT&T or anybody, covers this area of the lake very well, and certainly doesn't cover one ninety-eight. You know, we would be building this site as well. I mean, we can absolutely build this site to accommodate additional users, so if somebody comes on board, this site could be an opportunity for co-location for somebody else to provide service, both to the lake users and visitors and to the travelers along one ninety-eight. Let's see. I spoke with Mitch Rand in Essa- Let's see, I spoke with Mitch Randon at Sequoia RV Ranch, and he told me a story of a gentleman that came up and had booked a couple weeks to park his RV there, really loved the spot, it was beautiful. And he was a Verizon customer, and every day he had to drive into Lemon Cove in order to check his email and, and call his customers. And he was really, you know, he was really kind of beside himself about that because he really enjoyed the spot. And at the end of the day, he ended up, you know, terminating his, you know, his, his agreement to stay there early and went to a KOA in the middle of Visalia. And so he was, you know, both the customer was disappointed in that and obviously, you know, Mitch was as well.
Good.
There's many other examples here of the local businesses that kind, that basically are saying the same thing. You know, they're saying, "We're looking for service out here. We're looking for competition. We're looking for increased safety." And that's what this site's going to provide. And I think, you know, it's telling to say that, you know, that it's great to be able to come before a board like this and say that the community wants this service. You know, we have zero people, you know, saying, you know, we have zero people in opposition from the public here, and instead we have a whole group of people, and in the span of 45 minutes, I've been able to put this together. Frankly, if I had thought to do this, I probably could have made this a couple pages longer if I had thought of it earlier. In summary, I just want to say that this site as designed meets or exceeds all the elements within the county code. And I think that's critical. So that's number one. Number two, that this site solves a significant gap of coverage that Verizon has in this area. It solves it for both the residences, the visitors, and the local businesses here. Number three, that there's been no public opposition to this project. And to be at an appeal and have no public, public opposition is really kind of a rarity for us. It's a bit odd to be here, to be honest with you. And number four, not only does it not have public opposition, but it has local area support. So I, we're certainly here to answer any and all questions you have. We're excited about improving the communication service in this area, and we hope that you approve this project. Thank you very much.
I have a question, sir, if I might, Madam Chairman.
Certainly.
I noticed that in the, with the, your proposal area, you still have lack of coverage around a portion of the lake and on, on 198. And is it your intention at some point in the future then to put another tower, another location, to be able to cover that? This is part of the puzzle, if you will, the pieces that go together to make the puzzle.
That's absolutely right. This, yes, and if you want to switch to the PowerPoint presentation?
Oh, we have it in front of us.
Oh, I was just, just for the benefit of the public, if they wanted to see it. This area here that you're talking about, sir?
Yes, alright.
Yes, that area would not be covered by this site, and this is, this is our first step into the foothills. We, we cover the valley really well, and we've neglected the foothills area, and this is our first step. And certainly, there's going to be no one site that's going to be the magic bullet that's going to cover everything. But this one covers the needed areas that we need, because this area is really terrain-challenged, and, and it really does an excellent job of hitting the coverage objectives that Linda has, and we would certainly be looking for another site up the road, and maybe Linda wants to...
I'll just add that I already do have a project request in, pending, you know, approval of this one, so we can go ahead and know where to actually place that one, because again, one of the main objectives was Three Rivers, that we've heard over the years and years to cover Three Rivers, so definitely, yes.
And I can echo that by talking to the folks here, many of them who live in Three Rivers, they kept on saying, "Man, you guys need to get up into Three Rivers."
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
Thank you very much.
Well, it is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board on this matter now would be the time.
Ma'am?
Ma'am.
I need you to approach the board. We need your name and address, please, for the record.
My address or the town where I live?
Whatever you have.
Okay, my name's Nina Pagamas. I live in the town of Orosee. I happen to be a Verizon customer, and the surface in Orosee, I don't recommend it. I get a lot of dropped calls. So if they're doing a lot of miles, they may want to do Orosee again. And the quality, not that great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Talk to me, too.
Okay. Anybody that would really like to address the, this issue?
If I could, again, Teresa Simonis. It's not weather, there is a recognized need, that there is a need to improve the service at the lake. It's not the project that is of concern, but the location of the project that is of concern. What I was looking to do was to prevent proliferation of towers in an area that is in the final stages of becoming a designated scenic highway, and co-location is one way to do it, but at the February public hearing, there were also other alternatives that were asked to be explored, including not only different locations, but smaller and more towers that would not project above the ridge lines, but that would give the same coverage. And the intention was mentioned of mine was not to replace the existing facility at the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, but to look at integrating or co-locating with an existing facility.
Teresa, are you, since it's a public hearing, are you representing others' opinions or are you speaking as zoning administrator?
As, as a zoning administrator.
Okay. Well, I was hoping to hear from the public, and then probably we would get to you, but if there are no other public speakers, I suppose, you can defend your decision if that's what you're doing.
The only other thing that I wanted to say is that the maps that were presented were not consistent with what, what was presented to me as zoning administrator.
Okay. Well, that sounds important. Tell me that one more time. You're saying that the maps presented today were not...
The same maps that I saw as zoning administrator, showing the coverage.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't know when that happened. Mr. Sparks? A member of the public who wishes to comment.
Yes, I do. My name is Tom Sparks. I'm a resident of Three Rivers. I, I listen carefully to what the Verizon people were saying, and, and my concern is that, yes, we do have a scenic highway evaluation in progress, and in fact, the board issued a resolution to Caltrans certifying the visual assessment of the corridor. And that is significant because Caltrans considers this in progress, and it allowed us to do some things with Caltrans that we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise. And perhaps they could make themselves, avail themselves of that resolution. Second thing is, I certainly agree with Supervisor Worthley that we need to better understand what the cell phone operators are going to do for Three Rivers. Service is pretty bad up there, and a lot of people just can't get service in those areas. And it does represent a hazard on Highway 198. But this one tower does not totally solve that problem. And when a cell phone company comes in and says that's going to solve a huge problem, I can't quite believe it based on what they've said. It, it will, it will do some good. That is a dead area, and I'm an AT&amp;T customer, and I'm not a happy one, but that's the way it is.
You could be like me. I have one of each.
Yes, or maybe three.
And I hope that one or the other works.
Right. Anyway, I wanted to set the record straight on the, on the scenic highway.
Mr. Sparks, I have a question. So it's your belief then that somehow this tower would impact the scenic highway designation or...
I have no idea. I did not know that a tower was planned for that area. No one has, has contacted us. I only learned of it recently. You know, offhand, I would say it is acceptable, but we're going through the process of the corridor protection plan, and we're going to introduce that to the residents of Three Rivers in the next couple of weeks. And this would be, would be one element. I think that, based on the fact that there is no public opposition to it, that is, is to our credit. But it's always at the last minute when somebody steps up and says, "Wow, I didn't know about that." And frankly, it surprised me a little. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Sparks? Okay. Anybody else? Well, then I'll close the public hearing part, but the board may have questions of the zoning administrator. I'm not sure. Discussion questions by board members.
I have a question.
Okay.
On your next proposed site, moving up to Three Rivers, could you give us an indication of where that would be? Because I think what Mr. Sparks was saying, you put one up, it, it becomes a series, and is that series going to impact the scenic highway?
About to say, we're really waiting to draw the, what we would call affectionately the Three Rivers search area based upon the, this site being built and approved and seeing how the real-world performance is. So to, I can't say at this point even where it would exactly be located. Our goal would be to cover Three Rivers, but I don't know where in the Three Rivers area we're going to need to put it in order to have it link up with what we're calling the Lake Kuaia Dam site.
Well, I would think you'd have a fairly decent ballpark idea of where that tower would be.
And we know it would be up, up as 198 kind of circles north, up towards Three Rivers, so that it would both catch the section of 198 that we're missing on the east side and yet also do the 198 corridor as it travels north-south.
Any of the preliminary studies that I've done, basically, again, I have, I don't go out and speak to the customers or anything. I, I'm speaking purely RF, but yeah, you know, I can put a dot here and I can see that it covers. So I know that there's possibilities. However, I do not know if there's telephone facilities, if there's power, what would it take to bring power up? And that's where Alex would come in. We start, I'll say this is where I believe we need to be in this area. Then they will go out and see what is available, and we start working through the different candidates, what would be approved, you know, and working with the public and all.
We do know that up in the Three Rivers area, AT&amp;T does have service up there, and we would absolutely be looking to co-locate on their facilities if they, you know, if they worked. But really, at this stage, it's, I don't want to say it's Monday morning quarterbacking, but it, it, you know, it's looking into a crystal ball as to kind of where exactly it would go, and, and we really can't adequately answer that question, although we do know what the coverage objective would be. It would be to cover 198 and the section we're missing and the community of Three Rivers, absolutely. And if we could use an existing facility, we absolutely would, absolutely would.
Well, I began working on this scenic highway with Mr. Sparks and our staff three years ago, and we've gone through the process, and Mr. Sparks and our staff has basically done all the work on this. I travel that road frequently, and I traveled it last night, and it's very irritating to not have phone service since we are on a state contract with your company. But it's also very irritating if you go through a pocket of where you have a dropped call. And you may have service, you may say, "I have service at the lake," but you really don't have service in a certain section, and you drop a call, and that, then you go maybe 30 seconds further, and you're back in service, then you go another one minute, and you're out of service again, so...
You're in the mountains.
That's arguably worse.
Supervisor, you're in the mountains. These are line of sight towers. I'm having a hard time...
But this is what they're talking about, is solving that issue.
This will solve the issue?
Well, it's part of the process of solving it. Man, sure, I, I never heard that, if I can, I never heard them say this was going to solve the problem. This is a stepping stone. This is a piece to the puzzle.
Well, this will solve the problem.
You have to do it a piece at a time.
Most of it.
Yeah, you just have to do it a piece at a time, and this is not going to solve the problem. They never said that.
And it is important that, I mean, this is a really nice location where to catch those little 30-second bits or whatever, then, and we build, where we're going to build in, in Three Rivers, we can even possibly start looking at maybe repeaters to pick up those tiny little sections, but the, the main build needs to be a nice one to provide the RF to go ahead and, and basically, you know, pick up and then shoot down into the little areas because of the terrain.
Can you...
Challenged area.
Can you address for me the issue about map coverage, because I'm hearing that...
Right, I had addressed that.
Whatever the zoning administrator worked from perhaps was different than what we're seeing, so...
True, when I was originally asked to do that, where, you know, months ago, since that time, we've had the analog sunset. Verizon revamped my system, or it's called GeoPlan, the database where we do our modeling, the, the propagation tool. That was changed to better, actually more predictive, a better coverage plot of our digital network and our data network. And then also the cluttered models, which make up trees, foliage, a river opposed to a, an ocean, that was more defined in my modeling tool. So that was the difference from when those were originally done until now. And I can't go back either. And in fact, when I, the, the new hearing date came up, I wanted to look at that and make sure that if it was different, that it was addressed, and that's why I brought it up, because it is different, but it's, it's a better look at exactly what we're hoping to cover now. It's a better snapshot.
And also, let me emphasize that the, what I'm going to call the old maps, before the upgrades took place, the old maps still showed that this site was a superior location. I mean, that's the whole reason why, you know, why we've always been advocating for it. So, you know, the new maps just represent a software upgrade and also, like Linda said, the sunsetting or, you know, going away of our analog service and now just having digital so that it has a more accurate representation of what the coverage is going to look like, because, you know, this is just a sophisticated computer model of what the coverage is going to be, and with these upgrades, we can provide better maps, and we thought that that would be something that the board would like to see. We certainly aren't trying to kind of sneak in new evidence or anything like that, but this shows the most accurate information that we have at our disposal.
I have a question for staff. Teresa, would this have changed your opinion if you, on the maps, if you had the updated maps when we were going through this process?
There is still one missing link of the puzzle. The comparison map that was shown showed a 30-foot tower at the Army Corps of Engineers site, not a 100-foot tower. So there's still additional information that I would look to see.
What, would that make a difference?
This shows a 30-foot pole. This, the, the information given today shows the Army Corps site with a 30-foot pole, not a 100-foot pole.
Yes, and those are the maps that I haven't seen before. There still is an opportunity to look to see if the same coverage objectives can be achieved without an additional location.
I think from the terrain, looking at, you're not going to go through that mountain. I'm going to...
I'd remind the board that this is available for closed session if someone were zoned by...
Well, I don't think we need to go closed session.
Well, I...
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make that information available to you, sir.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the appeal of the applicant of Verizon Wireless. I think this is a step into the direction of better service and better options for the people of Three Rivers. I think the, the visual intrusion is relatively minor compared to the overall public good, and I think that would be considered by Caltrans.
Second, and I, just to, just to add to that, I'm, I'm looking at the map that shows the visibility from nearby highways, and this is a very unobtrusive tower from the standpoint that most of the time it's not visible, and, and you'd have to look hard to find it on those, you know, especially when you're on a road and you're driving, you know, you're not up looking. You're trying to keep your road, your car on the road. So I, I think the intrusion is very, very minimal, and I'm glad to second it.
If we can hold, if we can hold that.
But just hang on.
Hold on, don't push anything.
Oh, you have closed, you have closed.
Counsel.
There may be some specific findings that the board would need to make in connection with that motion, and Mr. Sims can address those for them.
Well, it is on for a special use permit, part of it, and I'm not sure if there was conditions for the special use permit. I don't know if you want to have this, direct the zoning administrator or someone from staff to set out the special use, the conditions are, are, wait for findings, and then...
Continue the matter for two weeks or some, some, some period of time, which those things could be completed.
You can still approve it.
You can approve it.
And ask them to read back. Conditions, yeah.
Well, we could amend that motion.
So you want to amend the motion to add findings?
Yes.
At a subject, we, we'll do that today.
intended approval subject to findings.
I amend, I accept the amended motion.
So amended, and we have a motion, amended motion and a second. Cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Expect the findings back in two weeks.
I think we were specific on that.
That should be sufficient time.
Okay. I hear counsel saying yes.
Yes.
It's about Ron's ending date, see if we can...
Okay. Now we have another small public hearing, item number six, which is a request from RMA to consider a request for solid waste collection rate increase. RMA to consider a request for solid waste collection rate increase. I would also like to state for the record that our 11:30 a.m. tour of the library, library expansion, which was to happen now, won't be happening until later. I'm assuming around 1:00, perhaps 1:30. Mr. Fussell, good morning.
Good morning, Board. Britt Fussell, Assistant Director with the Engineering Branch of the Resource Management Agency. And the item before you this morning is a public hearing to consider a solid waste collection rate increase for the private haulers. The Tulare County Refuge, excuse me, Refuge Removal Association has requested a cost-of-living rate increase. The hauler association is comprised of all the licensed private haulers conducting business within the county hauler areas. The last increase was approved by your board in December 2005, was effective on January 1 of 2006, and at that point in time, the request was for, and the board approved, a 13% increase in the rates. At that point in time, the increase was based on the change in the Consumer Price Index over the previous period. In letters from the haulers, it cited that the rate increase is necessary to cover increased costs associated with rising fuel costs, green waste disposal, container expense, vehicle maintenance, recycling diversion requirements, and the increased costs of meeting the California Air Resources Board or CARB emission requirements. Staff conducted an analysis of the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, all items for the San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose area, and determined that the CPI had increased 7.97% from December 2005 to February of 2008, when we first started working on this proposal. The Producer Price Index commodities for number-two diesel fuel rose 45.23% from December 2005 to January 2008. And when we first started working on this proposal before you, diesel fuel was in the $4 range and is now up in the $5 range. And also in correspondence from the Refuge Association members, it was indicated that compliance with the CARB regulations is approximately 2%, the cost. So, therefore, this morning, staff is recommending a 10% increase in all residential and commercial base rates, and this would account for the 8% increase in the CPI plus the 2% for dealing with the CARB regulations. In your packet attached to the resolution is Exhibit A, which identifies the proposed rates that would be effective July 1 if approved by your board. All of these rates have been rounded up either up or down to the nearest quarter dollar. In addition, the Exhibit A includes an added rate schedule for four cubic yard bins for four, five, and six day-a-week service. We already had one through six day-a-week service for the other bins. The four cubic yard bin did not have the four, five, or six, so we added that to have consistency in the rate schedule. Also attached in your packet is an Exhibit C, which identifies the proposed residential and commercial rates as they compare with neighboring counties. There's an extreme difficulty in trying to do that comparison of, because of the way the different counties conduct business. However, our analysis is that Fresno County probably best replicates Tulare County in the level of service and how they conduct service. Exhibit C identifies that the proposed residential rates in Tulare County are higher than the counties that were surveyed, with the exception of Fresno County.
Much higher than there.
As far as the commercial rates in the comparison, the county areas, it depends upon the type and level of service as to whether or not the county rates would be higher or less than the counties that we compare with. Also attached is Exhibit D, which identifies the proposed residential and commercial rates as they compare with the eight incorporated cities within Tulare County. And for the most part, the county's rates are higher than the residential and commercial rates in the eight incorporated cities. And this is largely due to the fact that these cities are more dense in nature and you can have a much more productive route inside the incorporated cities than you can in the county area. Each of the licensed haulers have notified their customers within their respective service areas of the proposed rates and of the effective date of the implementation and of this public hearing. And each licensee has provided proof of that notification. And the Resource Management Agency has provided published notice in the newspaper in accordance with the ordinance, and we published in the Visalia Times Delta, Porterville Recorder, and the Dinuba Sentinel. The Solid Waste Technical, Solid Waste Management Technical Advisory Committee, or SWMTAC, reviewed the requested rates at their May 8 meeting and had no significant comments on the proposal. Staff is only aware of one piece of written comment from an affected rate payer, and I believe that that was provided to your board, hopefully, because I think it was addressed directly to you. That individual is in the Three Rivers area and is serviced by Waste Connections, I believe. The licensed haulers are represented this morning, and with that, I would respond to any questions that the board may have, and I'm sure the licensed haulers would respond to any of your questions as well. And then completing that, we would request that you hold the public hearing.
Questions from board members?
I received correspondence about this issue from an elderly lady who wishes that, her message was if she could get a smaller can. Because a lot of these people that are old, older can't wield that large can around, so.
They would be happy to connect your constituents up with their hauler to see.
Because I know you have, they're two-sized cans.
Okay.
Thank you, Board.
Well, this is a public hearing, once again, so I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment before the board now would be the time. I see a gentleman coming forward.
My name is Mike Clark. I'm a resident of Tulare County, more specifically in the Poplar Cotton Center area. Before the board today is the increase for solid waste. I would ask the board to take a serious look, especially at Western Waste Management. They, they, they're using unfair practices. They're using forms of intimidation. I call your attention, I have a billing here, they bill you three months in advance, and it says full payment of invoice not received within 30 days is subject to a 1.5% late fee. That's in violation of the State of California usury laws. You cannot charge a late fee for a service you haven't provided. Other forms is, they come, and, because I take exception to this paying 90 days in advance for a service I've yet to receive. So, I got in a habit of meeting halfway, paying at 45 days. They can't charge me a late charge, they're in violation of the usury laws. So, now they've come to my tenants who do not pay a trash bill, and they've threatened them with intimidations that we're going to take the trashcans away, we're going to, and I have letters to this, if I could. This is a copy of my billing, where notes right there. This is a statement. This woman that has made this statement is blind, she's terminally ill, and did not deserve, as a matter of fact, she's not the customer, I am. And if there was a problem with it, I should have been one contacted, not one of my tenants. I feel, I came before this board in, in '05, and I, I asked the board to do something at that time, and it was referred to the Solid Waste Division of Tulare County. Well, nothing was done. So, I took it upon myself to contact Tulare County Solid Waste Division, and their comments to me were, "You can do your own." So, then I took out the paperwork to do my own, and then they hold me to a higher standard than they hold the, the, the solid waste carriers. I was not only to sort the cans and bottles, but I'm to sort the newspapers and everything. Well, I watched Western Waste Truck pick up my trash, and they go from my residences, right, because I'm the last cans to get picked up, and it runs right state to the county landfill. They don't stop, they don't sort anything. I've got two cans, one's for green waste and one's for solid waste, which was, you know, I own a trucking company, be real easy for me to run around there with a loader and pick up this trash, put it in a dump, and run it over there. But because they hold me to a higher standard, I can't do that. So, I'm asking this board to protect the constituency, your constituency of Tulare County, from these unfair business practices and means of intimidation. That's all I have to say today. All, I do sympathize them on the rate of the fuel costs, you know, I can understand it. But they're, the method, three years ago in '05, I, I was against the rate increase because I felt like they're getting three months payments in advance. Now, if you figured out 10,000 residences, you're looking at about, oh, $700,000 in advance, and about 450 of it is the same as a loan that they don't ever have to pay back. Because venture capital is like 10 or 12%. I mean, I could go into business, if somebody's going to pay me in advance, ask yourself, do you charge them three months in advance at the landfill to dump that garbage? And if you do, or if you did, you would hear them hauler clear into Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Many of your town of Rosy. I want you to deny the increase. Why? Because I don't think anybody's got an 8% increase in salaries.
Yes.
Or social security or anything else. And I don't think we have either. I think, also, I recognize a problem with the cost of fuel in '78. I bought a vehicle that gave me more mileage at that time. These citizens are before you, and I'm talking about the trash collectors. They've been aware of the cost of fuel for a long time. And if they haven't, I don't want to know why. The other thing is, I don't know if they've already built a vehicle where they're going to get more mileage. They're saying this is to get, probably replace vehicles, I don't know that. I don't know how old the fleet is. But from my, what I heard, they got a 15% increase. Am I correct? In 2005? And now you, I, to me, they're piggyback, they're going piggyback on the 2% increase that's been required. It's a nice move. If you pass the 2%, 8% goes in there. The other thing is, why, if, and this is to be taken into consideration, where they are reviewed, in the process they're making, and if they're making process, maybe phase in a certain percentage every year or every two years. To give them a flat-out rate increase, I think, to me, is criminal. I don't want them in my pockets. I think they charge enough as it is. I think it's excessive. And what they're asking for, again, is excessive. Their process needs to be reviewed. And they need to have a plan on, present a plan on how old is their fleet? What are they going to buy? And is it really that much of a difference? Are they going to, are they going to get more for, let's say, a gallon of fuel if they buy something new? Or is it going to be another two miles at the most? So, again, I object, and I say, I'm asking you to deny them until they present a better plan. Thank you.
I would remind those attending the board meeting that we have a certain sense of decorum and clapping is not usually part unless it's for services rendered. Thank you, I appreciate your attention to that.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. And we will not clap for you, sir. I'm telling you in advance.
I'm Richard Grass. I'm owner of Tulie Trash Company in Pixley, 11850, Road 122. And as you guys have seen from staff's recommendation, I think that, you know, we're more than justified. And just so you know, that any, we've mailed out thousands and thousands of these notices. And the very few calls that I've ever had come through have all been the people that didn't quite understand how much they were actually going up, and most of them, I'd say 80% because it's residential, they're going up like $2 a house. And as soon as they hear, you say, "Oh, $2, okay, well, thank you very much." And, you know, everybody knows that, that trash is, you know, it's a, it's a health and sanitation thing. You can't just say, "Well, you know, let's just eliminate a little of this and that to save a little money on gas." A lot of people will take one less trip to the grocery store a week if they can to save a little fuel. We, we don't have that option, you know. Our trucks have to roll, we have to, recycling programs that we have to keep, you know, in place to make the 35% diversion mandates that are part of our license. And, you know, it's not just fuel, there's a lot of other costs that, you know, we've incurred just in the last couple of years that kind of follows fuel, the price of the carts, and even steel has just recently gone through the roof. So, when we start up a brand-new customer, it used to be that bin may have cost 300 bucks a year ago. It's, that's almost a $600 container now. And, you know, just at every other angle, you just simply, at some point, you know, you have to be able to, you have to keep up with these expenses to, to keep your fleets rolling. And I, I really think that, all in all, and I'm sure most of you on the board would agree, I hope, that I really feel that all, all our companies are doing a really, really good job out there. And there's always thousands and thousands of people that we service. There's always going to be a person or two out there that maybe has some issue that didn't get addressed, and, you know, we're going to obviously try and do our best to take care of that. And it's, it's a shame that every now and then something falls through the cracks, obviously, that one gentleman there. But, you know, I can assure you that we all are very dedicated to doing the best job running our businesses as efficiently as we can so that we don't have to be here every year. You know, most, most solid waste contracts have an automatic CPI. The way our ordinance is set up, you know, the only time we ever get one is we have to come to the board and request it, and it's a big, long, drawn-out process. And as Britt stated, when we first went down this road and we wrote the rate increase letter, I think, you know, fuel was slightly below $4 a gallon, even just that short amount of time. You know, that's, it's impacting us just that much more all over again. And so, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer, and if not, I'll sit down and hope for your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Grass.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Karen, good board members, good morning. My name is Sean Edgar. I'm the Executive Director of the Clean Fleets Coalition, based in Sacramento. My office address is 1822 21st Street in Sacramento, California, 95811. And I just wanted to provide the clerk with a little bit of information on, you had received some testimony from, concerning the, concerning clean vehicles. And so, the information that I'll pass out to you will, and I'll just briefly touch upon the clean vehicle program that is required under state law. I'm based in Sacramento. I work for the Hauler Association and its individual members, assisting them with compliance strategies. Your board may be aware, and supervisor wordly, and I know, seeing you over at the Valley Air District for several years, the, the private trash carriers in the state of California were singled out in 2004 to be the first private transporters to have a requirement to reduce the public's exposure to diesel exhaust. The letter that I've passed out to you is from the Air Resources Board, and this was supplied to, to the county. And I'd just like to touch upon a few of the contents, and I'd be happy to, also, members of the public would like a copy. I also have copies available here at the day. The clean vehicle program established in 2004 required all solid waste collectors in the state of California to implement cleaner technology. So, going to Mrs. Gomes's question about what is the Clean Truck Plan, the letter before you from the Air Resources Board to the county addresses that the Clean Truck Plan that the Air Resources Board adopted in September of 2004 has resulted statewide in reducing the public's exposure to diesel particulate matter by some 2,260,000 pounds, and that during 2004, the initial milestone that was set statewide was exceeded nearly triple. There was a 10% requirement, and there was a, by the state at the end of 2004. Your local companies here, because they chose to act early and, and believed in the program, made substantial investments. And I can tell you, in Mrs. Gomes's neighborhood over in District 4, Pena's disposal has implemented a clean vehicle program and, and tried to make a migration to natural gas by partnering with. by partnering with the city of Danube with some fueling infrastructure that was already available there. Unfortunately, cleaner does not come cheaply. Those vehicles are in excess of a quarter million dollars each. Each one of the haulers here in the room today are required not only to retrofit the vehicles, meaning upgrade the exhaust systems for the vehicles that they have, but they're required to replace vehicles earlier than the normal lifespan for vehicles that are not capable of being retrofit. So, the, the state's observation in the letter they sent to you was that waste haulers throughout the state have consistently exceeded what the California Resources Board expected from this regulation. My personal involvement with many of the hauling companies here is then they have been out often and early. You'll see Waste Management and Waste Connections in particular were recognized by the state certified for early compliance with CARB regulation. All of the companies within the association are in good standing with the Air Resources Board. And in the second page of the letter I sent to you, there's just one important member, one important note I'll make. And, and this letter was sent and signed by four county supervisors throughout California, and they recognized, and I'll just quote from page two of the letter dated August 15th, 2006, addressed to your board. And it said, "This being the case and passing the rule, the board expressed its hope that the municipalities and service providers work together so that service fees reflect the service provider's costs for compliance." That's simply what we're asking you to do today. Your staff has done an excellent job in helping quantify this particular element of, of the rate application that the haulers have made. The haulers have done an outstanding job in, in providing measurable health benefit as a result of the clean vehicle program. In, in, in closing, I'll just say that by the end of 2010, all vehicles that are operated here in Tulare County will have to meet the most stringent standards. The haulers right now are about 50 to 60 percent of the way there. And this would function, I think, as a reasonable down payment to, to recognize costs they've already absorbed, and would also further allow them a platform to, to make it through the next couple of years of the program. With that, I'll answer any questions you have, or, and just thank you for your time.
Supervisor Worthley, does this qualify as the unintended consequences, or the no-good deed goes unfunded?
[laughing] It's the reality that the clean, cleanest costs money. And so, as you expect people to mandate that they do certain things to clean up the air, they're, they're gonna incur costs in doing so. And that's one of those things that happens.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the board on this matter? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board for discussion, action.
Madam Chair, I just approve, I appreciate the fact we've, we've broken out two factors here. One is the compliance with CARB requirements of 2 percent and a 6 percent increase in cost of, I mean, which is below the CPI. And, and it doesn't even take into account the recent run-up in fuel prices. And so, I think this, you know, it's an unfortunate situation in the sense that, yes, it costs, costs the consumer more money, but at the same time, we need to have an industry that survives. And in order to survive, they have to make some kind of, they have to be able to pay their bills themselves. So, I, I think this request is warranted, and I would move to approve as presented.
I would second that with a statement not unlike yours. Couple statements were made here today about some business practices. Mr. Fussell, we've heard those complaints before, and I think we've addressed your predecessor to address those complaints. So, if you would, again, the billing 90 days in advance, things of that nature, we ask to have that looked into. If you could look into that, I would appreciate that. Being a contractor still, I understand the rising cost of things. Fuel is just, even though I only run two vehicles, the, the cost of fuel has really impacted my business. We still dabble in some metal purchases, and our metal has gone up anywhere from 20 to 50 percent. So, I understand the need for this. So, that's the base of my second.
Madam Chair.
Is there some evidently discussion before we vote?
Yes. Uh, I also have, share the concern of Supervisor Cox, especially on this late payment, on, on services that have not been, been performed. And if our legal staff, and if our solid waste division would look into that matter, I would like to know if it's legal or illegal. And if it's illegal, I expect the haulers to amend the way they bill and charge late payments. The other issue is that, uh, this three-month billing in advance does pose a hardship on, on landlords who rent. And I know I have a commercial pickup on my farm, and I get billed monthly. So, if there are people who have rental homes, which you may, the haulers may consider as residential, but they're actually commercial rentals, I think they should be looking at a 30-day contract, just as I pay on my farm. And that's basically what I'd like to hear back, like Supervisor Cox, what can we do on these issues?
If I may, the most egregious accusation was picking up the three different containers and driving straight to the landfill, not running those containers through the process that, you know, they're, they're supposed to be run through. And having looked at the paperwork, this is the company that was at the bottom of the list of recycling on their diversion rates. So, I just hope, Britt, that, or Mr. Fussell, that you heard that and looked at that, and will check into those allegations.
Yeah. I'd like to also commend some of the haulers. I know, uh, Mr. Penya brought his truck by for us to look at, and they are making strides in replacing their fleet.
Supervisor Ennis, I don't want to leave you out if you have something you want to vent about.
No, I just echo what everybody else has said.
I think the bottom line here, I think we mentioned it with the stringent air controls and everything else, is that my rant, which is always taxpayers pay for everything, uh, we know where the ultimate bill goes. Okay. I believe the motion was to approve.
Staff's recommendation.
Staff's recommendation. And I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks to all who were here. Mr. Clark, it sounds like staff will work with you to address your issues.
And, Mr. Fussell, we do expect those answers back in a relatively short period of time.
He didn't hear, but I'll call him.
Okay. We're now on to untimed items, item 38. Mr. Forbes.
Good, good morning, just barely. Uh, my name is Jeff Forbes from the Board of Supervisors' office. Agenda item number 38 was placed on the agenda at the request of Supervisor Rashida in his role as Chair of TCAG. The request is for your board to auth, to approve a resolution authorizing the chairman to sign an offer of financial assistance for the San Joaquin Valley Railroad that has, part of it has been recently abandoned. Uh, one item that needs to be clarified in the summary section, it references authorizing an offer of no more than 1.4 million. That was inadvertently, inadvertently left in from a previous draft, so the resolution has no dollar amount tied to it. Um, now for the real presentation and for all the history, I'll turn it over to Ted Smalley from TCAG.
Thank you, Board. Ted Smalley from Tulare County Association of Governments.
Will this be a five-minute presentation, Mr. Smalley?
I will make it as quick as you want. So, um, I've been told three minutes.
Even better.
This is Tom Sparks, the chair. Don't take up any of my time, Tom. So, uh, we will...
It seems like we just had this conversation yesterday. Oh, we did.
I know. Deja vu here. Um, I will go through it quick. There are basically two abandements. We've been talking about this for a while. Uh, the technical term is 8X and 7X. Uh, the 7X, the one from Strathmore to Javista, was approved by the Service Transportation Board. The one from Exeter to, down to Lindsay was not. Uh, this provides us another, a number of opportunities. And let me, I'm just gonna go through this quick. Uh, that's why I just, and the bottom-line item is if we want to respond, we have to submit an offer of financial assistance. Has to be filed by June 16th, and I believe as reported yesterday, the recommendation is that we submit it via overnight mail on Thursday. And so, as you can imagine, timing is of the essence. And that's what the whole thing is about, is that we don't have much time. Uh, we've had quite a set of meetings with the Rail Committee. Mr. Sparks has done an awesome job as the Chair of that committee in bringing folks together and working on this over a short period of time. And let me go over the options. Uh, one would be to subsidize existing operations. That would mean in the interim, till we found a solution, we're just paying for operations that aren't working. That obviously wasn't considered the best solution, and it's certainly not a long-term solution. One would be looking at forming a shippers association. Again, this is logistically, I wouldn't say it's difficult, it's impossible, to have agreements all in place in the next three days. Uh, and it's not, it isn't required for 8X at this time. Third, and if I'm going too fast, tell me, but somebody bigger than me said I only have three minutes. So, form the authority through TCAG to acquire the lines, or through the county. This, again, we lease to another operator, look to get shippers to support through a modest surcharge, potential financial financing, and would allow for appendage to a new short line. And this narrows the county's liability for this. Then finally, support privately funded. Uh, however, this would likely not result in abandonment from Lindsay to Javista. Or it would result in the abandonment because there simply wouldn't be time. The bottom line, and I'll get right to the recommendations, is to make an offer of financial assistance, whether it be through TCAG or the county, to acquire the line of the railroad. And, um, this was earlier slides put together, um, probably should say, entering negotiations. It would include a potential offer to guarantee the amount of cars that would be used for both 7X and 8X, which would be about 200 cars for each. And it would include a surcharge of $300 per car for the 7X shippers. Along with that, we would continue to pursue grant funding, um, for upgrades. And we would encourage private acquisition of the rail from Exeter all the way up to Fresno. At yesterday's meeting, we also talked about amending Measure R that would allow this to eventually be the funding source. That is, I think, under three minutes.
Didn't want to rush you if it's important information. Questions or comments from board members?
Only comment would be, I think, if it wasn't clear in the presentation, that what, what was agreed upon yesterday at TCAG was that essentially the county would be acting as a bridge to make the loan initially, or not even necessarily pass the money, but be prepared to do that in the short term until such time as Measure R could be amended to allow for funds that are being accrued there to be used for, for this purpose. And so, actually, the county is acting in a, in a bridge loan situation. We're not gonna end up owning a train line, a railroad, but rather, we're just holding a place and protecting the options for the future.
That, that's correct.
That's what the ask is today. Is that correct?
Yes. Real brief, the board knows where I'm at. I don't know that, we don't know, as we sit here today, that the Measure R will be amended to use those monies. That's something that has to go back to that committee and through the process. Uh, here over the last 30 days, we approved another one and a half million dollars for a museum above and beyond what we had set aside. We have a bid for over $700,000 more on a motor pool relocate, along with this 1.8 possible million dollars. That makes $4 million in 30 days. I, I cannot support this from either. There's not enough guarantees. So, that's, so, and I think the board knows where I'm coming from. If you look at what's happened the last few days, where are we gonna be pulling these millions of dollars from to make these commitments with, with no guarantee that TCAG or some private folks will bail us out?
Comments?
Oh, that's one board member. Uh, I believe that we do approach things business, on a business-like manner. And I understand Supervisor Cox's position, but a lot of times, if you approach things on a business-like manner, you can't wait for all the information to be in line. This is an earnest money offer. We will not lose any money. Uh, we're not putting any money as non-refundable. And we're not even sure we're gonna be able to make this deal, but at least it keeps the window open. If we do not act, that railroad line from Javista to Strathmore will be removed. And that is pretty much a fact. And once that railroad line is removed, it'll cost over a million six per mile to put that railroad line back in. And financially, I don't see that in the cards of a new company coming in, putting, investing a million six per mile to replace that railroad, uh, line that we have existing. So, I think it's a great opportunity for us to step up. And, and I really don't see much risk in this myself, uh, especially when the value is not based on goodwill or based on income. Thank goodness, it could, well, it should be based on income. But you're getting a bottom-line salvaged value that's been established with the federal government. And, uh, I would not see us offering more in the long run, more than the salvaged value. So, I think it's a safe, safe investment. Uh, and I believe that TCAG will make that amendment. This is a, a piece of a lot, a lot, a lot larger puzzle, which could involve three counties and three associations of governments in the end on a public-private partnership. There are a lot of private investors willing to step up, uh, to look at this venture, but they do not have the time nor the information to put up the money. And, uh, we are in that position to do that.
This is one supervisor that will probably vote in favor, um, because I see it as an opportunity to continue the dialogue and search for other funding sources rather than just be cut off, as so often happens. Uh, I don't think we're in any jeopardy because we can always say no.
Sell, sell, sell us stuff.
Yeah. We just, I believe we're just extending the dialogue. Um, and I don't have a problem with that. Okay. There's no other question or comments? Uh, Chair would entertain a motion then?
I make the motion to approve the resolution authorizing the chairman to sign an offer of financial assistance.
Second.
Cast your votes, please. Motion passes four to one, um, to extend that offer. Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Thank you, Mr. Smalley. Okay. Item 39 is information only. Is that something we need to read into the record, or it's just entered into the record because it's on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Add to your board on this information-only item, will we be back at the end of this month with a agenda item to request a ward to the lowest responsible bidder?
Thank you.
Thank you. I would note that at least two of those bids were under the engineer's estimate.
And this is not Tulare County money being spent on this. So, it's not adding to the, to Mr. Cox's list of county obligations.
I don't know. You better check him. He might add it.
$30,000 is a little bit of ours.
Okay. All right. We will move to item 40, which is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board on matters under their purview but not on the agenda now would be the time. Please come forward to give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kit, and I'm an employee of Tulare County and a member of SEIU Local 521.
My name's Steve Browning. I'm with Tulare County.
And I wanted to bring to your attention your own strategic business plan and management system for 2006 to 2011, under motivation, reward, and recognition. Tulare County employees are the organization's most valued resource. The purpose of motivation, reward, and recognition is to make the abstract concept of performance a clear, relevant, and personal obligation for each county employee. This component of the, of the strategic management system will provide county employees with, and I'm not gonna read the whole thing because you're all familiar with this, you all agreed to it, I'm just gonna skip to number three and refresh your memory. Competitive pay, health, employment, and retirement benefits commensurate with prevailing regional private and public sector employment.
Two weeks ago, you responded to our bargaining team's proposal with a offer of zero wage increases with no improvements to our insurance. Since that time in response, the majority... Since that time in response, the majority of the county employees have signed a unity petition which states, "We, the undersigned, work for Tulare County and will, and will support our elected bargaining team in any way necessary to represent, to represent us during negotiations and to work for a contract that gives us a voice in working conditions in our departments and work areas, provides competitive wages that are comparable to surrounding counties, and ensures affordable healthcare to all of us. We deserve a fair contract, and offering zero is unacceptable. I hereby present you with these signatures."
Okay, anybody else during public comment? Seeing and hearing none. Any Board of Supervisors' matters you wish to comment on today? Gentlemen?
Just one quick one. Each of you has the press release provided by Mr. Coyne and turn of bio from our staff in regards to the Service Learning Grant awards. And it shows the high schools or the organizations in your districts that were awarded the grants. We have two additional schools, one in Exeter, who has a fifth-quarter program that was not funded, and the Viselia La Sierra Academy, who had a master carpenter program that were not funded, that we're looking for local partners to help fund those grant opportunities. So if you have folks that would be willing to help fund those grant opportunities, it would be appreciated.
Okay, any other board members with Board of Supervisor matters today?
I do. You?
Yes, Supervisor Rashida.
Thursday evening in Exeter, we're having a town meeting talking about the power line, transmission line that's south of one ninety-eight. The meeting will be at seven o'clock. It will be at the Exeter Memorial Building. And it's basically an update, the steering committee is going to give an update to the community people as what has happened and what we intend to do. And more or less a procedural-type meeting. It is not going to be a fundraiser to speak of. It's an information meeting.
Is this a weekly meeting now?
The steering committee, committee meets weekly, at least weekly. So this is just an update.
Orders will be served. Pardon?